Chairman Jones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fathers, we gather today to do the county business. Help us remember that we are so blessed in this country to have such a great nation and a great county and great folks working for us. Help us to remember all our blessings at this time of the year. We also request, though, we need a little more moisture, Lord. There's some of us that are a little on the short side, but that is fine. We will proceed. Thank you again, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I don't have any chair comments this morning, and we'll proceed to amend the agenda on the request of Commissioner Jones. What is your request, sir?
Mr. Chairman, we have a bill regarding a little sewer repair at the library, and I'd like to bring that up for board consideration.
All right, do you want to put that at the end of the agenda then, sir?
It's no difference.
Okay, we'll put library expense at the end of the business agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we'll amend the agenda accordingly. This morning, we have a consent agenda, which we need to exclude the minutes from the last meeting. Other than that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda absent the minutes?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda without the minutes being approved. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody who's notified us for public comment?
Yes, sir, Carolyn Crouch, District Director for West Plains Extension District.
Good morning. We have three folks.
Good morning, yes, thank you, Dory. I just, for those that don't know me, I'm Carolyn Crouch, I'm the Director for the West Plains Extension District, and I just wanted to bring some new agents to introduce to everybody. We have Lauren Litten, she's our newest agent, she's our Ag and Natural Resource Agent. She started the Monday affair, so we kind of got her thrown right in the craziness of being an Extension Agent. And then Tori Mock, she is one of our 4H agents, she's stationed, both of these agents are stationed here in Finney County at our office on Ninth Street, and so just wanted to come and introduce them and let you guys know, we really appreciate all the support that we get from you guys as far as Extension. Special thing Salon, he's been a great mentor for me, and I appreciate that. And I also want to give a shout out to Dory. She has held my hand and patted my back, and I couldn't ask for anybody better to work with down here, so I just want you to know how much I appreciate you. So, and if you guys ever have any comments or questions, you know, feel free to reach out to me, but I just wanted to come and maybe give them just a quick minute to let you know what they're working on, thank you.
Please introduce yourself for the viewing public.
And also, Mr. Chairman, as we're getting going, just a little bit of your background before you got to Extension.
I'm Lauren Litten. I was previously the Ag and Shop Teacher at Deerfield before I took the Extension position, originally from Cheyenne, Wyoming, little fun fact about me, but I'm excited to be in this position, I'm excited to work with both Finney and Scott County in the Extension District. We've met with our Southwest Area Agronomist, Logan Simon, and we did a Southwest Kansas meeting for what programs we're going to bring to the Southwest area, so we're excited for some of those programs that we can bring to Finney County, and then just working with other Extension Specialists to figure out what programs are needed.
Hi, I'm Tori Mock, I'm the 4H and Youth Development Agent for Finney County and also work up in Scott County. I wanted to start by really thanking Lon and Dwayne for all of their help and support leading up to the fair this summer. Your advice and wisdom was greatly appreciated, and I think we had a pretty good fair. We also are really excited about, the state is introducing a new program called Thrive that really focuses on the leadership and youth development portion of 4H that we're going to start introducing to our 4Hers come October and their parents, and really excited about that, also really excited about some openings with the REC Art Director and the city, just the things that we can do to expand 4H to a broader audience, so really excited about what's coming up.
Tori, a little bit about your background.
Oh, yes, so originally, I was in V Lot Management, spent some time working for FSA, and then ended up with 4H Youth Development here, and I'm really excited to be back in 4H, it was a huge part of my life growing up, so.
To everyone making public comment, thank you for your comments this morning. Does any other Commissioners have any other questions or inquiry? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Other public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll go on into the business items and start with Kelly Munyon, who's going to give us a nice, long speech about observed holidays for 2025.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this morning, the Board's being asked to consider and approve 2025 observed holidays. It should be noted that approval of these holidays will also be approving the closure of all county buildings. The 2025 observed holidays are listed on the memorandum and designated in the personnel policy, none of the 2025 holidays are on a weekend day, therefore no adjustments to the observed days will be presented this morning for consideration. And then also, just to note, Veterans Day is not on there, but our veterans do receive that day off, just the other county staff work, so. Annually, the Board approves the holidays that are observed by county employees and authorizes the closure of the buildings. Alternatives are to approve the 2025 holidays as listed and specified in the personnel policy, or deny the 2025 holidays and direct staff with other desired alternatives, and of course, staff recommends option one, to approve the holidays as presented.
Questions from the Commission?
Not a question, but I think it's an important, we need to emphasize too about what you said on Veterans Day, that we are recognizing our veterans by giving them that time off.
Yes.
But, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the 25, 2025 holiday schedule and building closures as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the 2025 holiday closings and observed holidays. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Don't go very far. Next up on our agenda is workplace violence training.
Yes.
Long speech again, please.
Long speech, yes, sir. So the Board's being asked to consider partial day closure of the Finney County Administration Building for all Administration Building staff on Friday, October 11th, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Workplace Violence, Active Killer, and Emergency Preparedness Trainings are vital to develop skills and practice proper procedures to ensure the safety of all county staff and visitors of the Administration Building. These trainings will be provided by Garden City Police Department, consist of video presentations, a scenario demonstration, and first aid stop the bleed. Prior years' trainings also provided walkthrough of county administration offices identifying strengths and weaknesses, and individual administration offices are expected to conduct periodic inter-office trainings, keeping this information fresh for their current employees and training new employees for preparedness in the event of an incident. External offices in the county were encouraged to provide the same training opportunity to their staff by coordinating with the Garden City Police Department and/or request what they may need from the Board for support of their training. So the alternatives today allow the partial day closure of the Finney County Administration Building on October 11th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to participate in this annual workplace violence training opportunity, or to deny the partial day closure and direct staff to seek alternatives to such training. Staff would recommend option one, allowing the partial day closure of Garden City PD coming in, conducting this training from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Questions? I would note that this Board appreciates the participation of Garden City Police Department in this training, and facilitation of their endeavor in this regard is greatly appreciated by the Board. Motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion.
To approve the partial day closure, closure of the administrative building to participate in the annual workforce violence training opportunity Friday, October 11th, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
That would be my motion, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the administration building to participate in the workforce training, violence training, and the building will be closed from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from our Register of Deeds. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Please introduce yourself for the viewing public.
Stephanie Shockley, Register of Deeds. The Register of Deeds Office will be initiating a scanning project to archive all our records. When we migrated to the current software program in 2019, all images were imported from microfilm, and some are not very good quality, so we have researched a couple different companies to do the project. We have selected U.S. Imaging because they have a three-phase process, which includes onsite scanning, double inspect, group name and verify, and image enhancement. They also format the images to export into our records management system. The total for this project will be $208,648.86, and will be budgeted out of our technology fund, therefore, it will not affect the county budget. I believe this will be a huge benefit to the public. I have sent the contract to Kara Schartz for review, and she has approved it. I have also provided a copy for your information. I am seeking authorization from the Board to sign the contract, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Members?
This is a complete of every document?
It is.
Even if it's been on the microfilm?
Yes, it'll be a reimage of everything.
So my question is, so for those of us that use your online stuff?
Yes, sir.
How soon will it be available for everybody online?
They didn't really give me a time schedule, but it could take probably up to a year.
Quick question, Stephanie.
Yes.
I know that this is all technology, but the old, old record books, what did you do with those?
We still have them in our office, and that's what they will be scanning.
And they, you're going to keep them there?
Yes, yes, I won't get rid of them.
Okay, I was going to say, some of those have kind of got a lot of history to them.
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll keep those, and those that have images or pages you can't read, that's what U.S. Imaging does, they'll bring that to life, so you can read it.
Mr. Administrator, Robert, do we have funds on hand to pay this bill?
Yes, as Stephanie stated, those resources will come from the technology.
Right, our, our right.
Money and within that fund to do that.
Our auditors would be real proud of us, and so therefore we have the funds, and it complies with the cash basis and budget laws, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ding for me.
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up to that question, more to Robert maybe than Stephanie, but so 200 and some thousand would come out of that technology fund, what's remaining in that fund, or is that used in, or is that used in basically 100% of the?
The total that we have in it currently is 271,000.
So there'll still be 70, 60, 70,000?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the Commission? Motion?
Who needs to sign the contract?
She does.
I do.
We just need to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation of the scanning from Red, name of the company, I lost it.
U.S. Imaging.
As presented. I'll second his motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract and to have Stephanie sign the contract. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, to hear from Beth Beavers, regarding to fiscal year 25 Youth Services carryover. Please announce yourself for the viewing public.
Beth Beavers, Director of Finney County Department of Corrections. This morning, I'm seeking approval for the FY25 carryover budget. This budget is previous year's revenues collected, these fees are, or these revenues are not covered by grant funds, so for youth services, that is electronic monitoring fees for pre-adjudicated youth. And that is to the total of $84,424.86. We have no large purchases slotted for these funds for FY25.
Questions from the Commission? Motion, Vice Chairman?
I move that we approve the budget request for carryover from detention.
Youth Services.
Youth Services for. As stated.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to have the carryover, $84,424.80 assigned to Youth Services budget. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Don't go far, now we have community corrections, adult corrections.
The FY25 adult carryover budget is $303,942.13. These again are fees generated from previous years. For adult corrections, these are substance abuse fees, client fees, electronic monitoring fees, and UA fees from adult clients, so none of this is covered through our grant. Again, no large, no large purchases are slotted for these funds.
Mr. Chairman, I will make that motion to do for the carryover budget for adult correction for 303,942.13.
Correct.
Second? Been moved and seconded to approve the carryover budget for adult corrections as stated in the motion. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Hey, on our agenda, we have the request for the date and time for hearing to amend the budget.
Morning Commissioners, Jenny Hamel, Assistant County Administrator and Finance Director. I am requesting that we set a date and time for the, the CDBG fund. During the budgeting process for 2024, we did not anticipate that we would need full authority of all of the funds available in that account, so we are short from the amount that was requested to be sent back to the state. As they are closing those loans locally, they'll be serviced by the state going forward, so I am requesting that you set a hearing date for October 7th at 8:35 to give us full budget authority to send those funds back to the state.
Pretty straightforward.
Yes.
And CDBG stands for?
The Community Development Block Grant, and you have attached on there the proposed budget.
That was for the people out on TV now.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we set the hearing for the CDBG fund budget for 8:30 a.m. October 7th.
I think she asked for 8:35, is there a reason?
Or did I say 8:30? I meant to say 8:35, I'm sorry, yes, I stand corrected.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to request the date and time to amend the hearing date for Community Development Block Grant Fund of the 2024 Budget for October 7th at 8:35 a.m. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we'll take that up at that time.
Thank you.
Is Mackenzie here by any chance?
Macro.
Mackenzie, we're going to jump to the fall cleanup, we have a little bit of time before the scheduled public time, or?
Kaylee's going to do it.
Okay, Kaylee's going to do it, okay, so the 2024 Annual Fall Cleanup, let's take that up.
Mackenzie's lost her voice, so I'm going to fill in for her. I'm Kenneth Jones, Public Works Operations Coordinator. I'm here to discuss the fall cleanup. The County Commissioner asked to waive a $2 per ton municipal waste fee for the 2024 Annual Spring/Fall Cleanup. Finney County Public Works received letters from the City of Garden City and the City of Holcomb requesting Finney County to assist in their fall cleanup programs by waiving the $2 per ton municipal waste fee. The 2024 Garden City Fall Cleanup will last from September 30th through October 11th of 2024, and the Holcomb Fall Cleanup will last from October 4th to October 13th. Finney County receives $2 per ton for municipal waste from the landfill. Waste Connection sends this money to the county on a quarterly basis. We have waived this fee for the city cleanups in the past. Staff requests that the Board also waive the $2 per ton municipal waste fee for the residents of Finney County to haul unwatered items in on the two Fridays during the city cleanup. This year, those dates will be October 4th and October 11th. Alternatives, the Board of the County Commissioners may approve the waiver for the 2024 Garden City, Holcomb, and County Fall Cleanups, or alternative two, the Board may not approve the waiver for the 2024 Garden City, Holcomb, and County Fall Cleanups. Staff recommends alternative one, to approve the waiver for the 2024 Garden City, Holcomb, and County Fall Cleanups.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
When appropriate, I'll offer a motion.
I'm ready.
I move that we, because this is an ongoing year after year endeavor, that we approve the waiver for the 2024 cleanup of the communities and the dates have been stated. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the proposed 2024 Annual Fall Cleanup, and I would also note that includes all residents of the county on October 4th and October 11th, and the City, recommend City of Garden City's scheduled dates and times as presented. Any further discussion? All those in?
One, one quick question, Kaylee. Now, notification for everybody, we'll find these dates, the cities will do the notification, or city and counties there?
Both, the county, we will send notifications to, like Southwind and Towns and all of our housing additions that they are capable of doing, hauling their stuff off on those dates, and the cities will notify their residents.
Are we stationing dumpsters?
We will not pick anything up, but they, in the letter, we will tell them, give them some options that they have, like they can get a roll-off can or whatever and have it hauled off.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and take up the library expense that we added to the end of the business agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Amy Jones, go.
Yeah. The library had some sewer problems based on the age of the building, it's not surprising that some plumbing needed to be replaced, and, and, let me look here just a little bit, so I'll give you accurate information, RJ Plumbing did the repairs, had to make a couple trips back, and, and the total bill is $950.28. That came up last Monday night at the, or, you know, Monday night at the, at the Library Board Meeting, and I asked them to send that bill over here. We've, we've got a, a question that's still never been answered about that building, it's owned by the, by the library, but we pay them, pay LSNS to manage that building. We, we don't necessarily pay LSNS, LSNS to maintain or the upkeep on the building, so my question is, do the other Commissioners feel that this is a bill appropriate for the county to pick up $950.28, or is it appropriate to send that back and say, "Library, forget to buy some books and buy a sewer instead," so that's my position.
What do you recommend, Commissioner?
I recommend the county pick it up, but.
On the paperwork that I have on my desk, it has two different bills, Commissioner Jones, one is for 628.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I read the wrong side, 628 is the correct amount.
Right, and that was for an invoice of seven thirty, and there's also an invoice from five fourteen.
Correct.
Did we pay the five fourteen?
No, it's, it's still pending.
The vendor has not been paid?
Don't think so.
All right.
Yeah, that's what I wondered too, Mister Chairman, if it's both of those bills together.
Well, I would assume so if it's not, if it's outstanding, and you serve on that board, Commissioner Jones, you think the county should pay this maintenance expense on that building?
We have these odd arrangements on buildings. That building, the, uh, the senior center is another example of who owns what. The Historical Society Building, and on and on. We've never really had a determination of, of who has what responsibility. But LSNS receives a yearly contract amount for management and paying the personnel cost. But we have other, we, they pay the county back for, um, for cleaning services. And each one of those buildings that I just mentioned kinda has a different protocol on how we take care of the bills. So I have long said that we need to sit down and come up with a, with a policy that's kinda equal for all of the buildings, and we still have not done so.
Mister Chairman, well, my suggestion or guess would be, you know, we're paying them over a million dollars a year now to manage the building. You know, I would classify this as management. This isn't capital improvement. Whereas we paid for the capital improvement when we installed the fiber and did the AC, HVAC system and those type of things. But this is, I would think would fall under maintenance.
However, Larry, I'll remind you that recently we approved eighteen hundred dollars and a dime, as I recall. I may be off just a few dollars, but that was for the drainage pipes from the roof going down through the walls that had rotted out also. So plumbing is, plumbing is plumbing, it's getting in bad shape.
Well, we could ask the county counselor to give us an opinion as to whether this should be maintenance or capital expense. Capital expense we have paid in the past, or whether this is maintenance. But I would ask the two Commissioners to decide whether we're gonna make a motion today.
I'll offer the motion to pay it, then we can.
Which one? One or both?
The six hundred and twenty-eight dollar bill.
Commissioners, the, the email from Pam included both. Her emails stated both.
Okay, but, but our discussion at that meeting was for the county, for, I, I told them to mail over the six hundred dollar bill, so.
It's been moved that we pay from which account? The six hundred and twenty-eight seventy-five?
County General would be the. Yeah, we'll take it out of the general fund unclassified.
Is there a second to this motion? Motion fails for lack of a second. The issue shouldn't go away, as Commissioner Davy Jones's point is clear, that we have a service contract with the folks who run the library. As Chairman, I'd like to table this item to the next meeting if the time allows to have the opinion of council as to whether this is maintenance or capital repair. Is it satisfactory to the board?
Well, Mister Chairman, I would just simply add, I'm concerned about a vendor not being paid since May. So I'm, I'm wondering, were these submitted to the management company, Dave? Were these bills submitted?
And I don't know, Lauren, I'm sorry.
So that's another piece I'd like to hear.
We had a bit of confusion because the LSNS CEO was present, and so there's a lot of other discussion going on about their, their management and not this bill.
Well, what, what my, my comment is, Mister Chairman, is that in addition to counsel's opinion, that we also know what LSNS's opinion is.
All right, I'll ask her to seek that out. We want an opinion, Madam Counselor, on both bills, both the six thirty twenty-four for six twenty-eight seventy-five, and also the bill dated five fourteen twenty-four of nine fifty twenty-eight. Would you, you can inquire of those and find out their position and report back to us. All right, it is nine o'clock. And this is the scheduled time for us to take up the issue of the 2025 budget. The, uh, do you wanna take up the issue of net revenue neutral first, Madam Clerk, before we take up the budget hearing?
Well, I did provide you with the list of, of how this is supposed to roll out this morning, so yes, you should start with the R and R. That must be done before you adopt a budget.
Okay, so we're going to, go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna offer a motion on net revenue neutral, if you're ready.
I am ready.
Okay, uh, I move that we open the, the meeting for a public hearing to hear taxpayer objections related to exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to open this matter for a public hearing on taxpayer objections to relating to our exceeding the revenue neutral rate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. We will hold a public hearing. Madam Clerk, was the notice published in the Garden City Telegram?
It was. It was published on eight three. The notice from the clerk was also mailed out on eight eight, so both of those requirements are met.
Very good. Is there anyone here to address the Commission with regard to discussion of the county exceeding the revenue neutral rate in our 2025 budget? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name, tell us where you live, and what your comments are.
My name is Lawrence Green. I live at eight fifteen East Price. And I'm here to object to the increase to the neutral rate. You know, as I've stated, it's a previous one that I can understand, you know, a need for the increase, but to go above the neutral rate, there's lots of people that are homebound on fixed rates, and they have to live within their budget, within their means. And I think that as the county commissioners, that you should do the same. And we don't have the means to increase our income. We have to make cuts in our budgets or just not spend. And I think that, you know, as I said, there's a lot of elderly people, and it puts a heavy burden on them with their taxes. So I would just like to voice my concern that you guys stay within the budget and make cuts instead of increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the Commission with regard to the single issue of exceeding the revenue neutral rate? Please come up and announce yourself. Please tell us your name and your address, sir.
Steve Gastensleger. I live at five four one Susan Street. By looking at my tax bill, the percent of increase is nine point six eight nine. And if I added all these up on increases on everything, it's eighty-one point five oh seven percent, which is completely out of hand. My home was valued over twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars in one year. I'm retarded. I just got so much money, and this keeps going. At the present rate, I'll be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in taxes in ten years. Anybody got a hundred and ten, ten or twenty thousand dollars extra? Anyone? Okay. This is well above the neutral, and I know this is built off the DCAD. I've investigated it, and I know no matter what tax entity it is, they're in contact with the appraisers, and they use DCAD and they don't use U-TAC, UPAT, which is a standard US code. You need to look at that if you don't know what it is. DCAD is completely fraudulent. And, you know, it's just like going on Zillow, getting square footage of what your house is and what it is on comparison, and that's what they go by. And the state of Kansas is at a one point three two percent decrease in home value over the last year and a half. And that's just not, that's just been two months. The other thing is, if it continues, and I'm, I hope it doesn't, but there is thirty-seven percent in this country that are upside down on their taxes, and they can't pay it, and they're gonna foreclose. Also, when you jump up this appraisal, the insurance company looks at my house and increase the insurance. That's another thing. It's never-ending, it's a snowball, and it's running down an avalanche. Someday, the avalanche is gonna quit. I don't want anyone to lose their home, I don't wanna lose mine. I have my home paid for, I haven't had a mortgage for forty-five years. Whatever I got, I pay cash, even cars. And it's concerning to me. All my life, my wife and I, well, my wife is so tight, she screws her socks on in the morning. And the thing is, we've done everything right in our life. We've paid our bills, we have been very diligent about our finances, and now we're in trouble, and we're getting punished, and it's not right. So it's up to the county commissioners to start something. You know, it's just completely out of hand, and the taxpayers are gonna go down. And when you lose your taxpayers, you've lost a source of income. And from what many experts say today, and have been for many years, need to outlaw and just quit property taxes, put it in a sales tax, and they've proven it has worked. And then everybody, not only the property owners in this community or anywhere in the United States, will pay for everything. And I don't know where that sales tax will go on this current situation, on inflation and everything else. But so far, it's cost us about six hundred and sixty dollars every month just to get food, extra. Where are you gonna come up with that? Should I go back to work? I'm gonna be turning seventy-five years old. I would like to have my house remain in my family. It's no different than a 401K. And by using a DCAD, it's actually taxing unrealized gains. And that's exactly what it is. And then it's violating constitutional laws, and I'm sure that in the codes of the Kansas, that you're violating a lot of codes of Kansas on appraisals. In Missouri, there was counties that this has happened, they fought it, went to court. Counties and cities have to give the money back to the taxpayers. They don't have the money. Do we wanna go that far? I don't think so. So what's happened to those counties? They're back in court, but they don't have a leg to stand on because of UCAD, and they're not following US code, United States code. And they have also violated the Constitution of the United States in many amendments, and that's what this country is built on. I fought for it, everybody fought for it in the military, and you're all worth it. We're glad to have done it. But got to have a resolution somehow, just figure out how to stop this before everybody starts getting into trouble. I don't care how much money you have, when you're a multimillionaire, it's gonna catch ya, and you're gonna lose if you don't try to do something. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment to hear taxpayer objections related to exceeding the revenue neutral rate? Hearing none, except, oh, one more. Please state your name.
Keith Overland, eleven thirteen Pershing Avenue. And I really can't improve on what he just said, and I can't talk to what everybody else is going through, but I can tell you what I've been through. In the last five years, my taxes have, my house appraisal has gone up more than twenty thousand for each of the last five years. That's a fifty percent increase over what the value of my home is. Now, I haven't done any improvements to my property, it's all based on someone else's property. So if my next-door neighbor sold his house, and it was torn down, and they built a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house and sold that to some new person, they would come and say, "Well, my house is now worth five hundred thousand." That's kind of the, the rationale that is being used when they do these appraisals. And I recall years back, probably about five years ago, we were told as county taxpayers, if we, uh, we just approved the sales tax increases, that they wouldn't have to increase our property taxes. And my property tax has gone up in each of the last five years solely based upon my property valuation. Of course, when the valuation goes up, where's the insurance company do? They go up as well. So those two things there take one-third of my social security, fully one-third. And then you add the state of Kansas on top of that for my car tags, money that I have to pay for income tax. And about half of my social security income goes for government. I get to spend the other fifteen thousand dollars for the year. So you add another five hundred dollars a year, six hundred dollars a year, every year on top of that, and pretty soon, like has been said, I'm gonna run out of money. I have no alternative to move out of the county, move out of the city, move out of the state, find another state, perhaps Missouri, perhaps Oklahoma, perhaps Texas. My brother lives in Lubbock, Texas, has a house that's twice the size of mine, worth a lot more money, pays half my taxes in Texas, in Lubbock, Texas. So something must be done. The interest rates, the way they're going now, are hurting everyone as well. I know the county spends more money because everything costs more, we realize that. They say it's three percent. Well, none of these increases are three percent. They're all well in excess of three times that. That's just the counties. You get to the college and the high schools, and we'll have conversations with those people as well, but they're twenty percent, seventeen to twenty percent, so something must be done. Someone has to know when to say no. Live within your budget, live within your means. Thank you very much.
Keith, I appreciate your comments. I did not catch your last name.
Overland, O-V-E-R-L-E-N-D.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, Keith? All right. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the commission to hear taxpayer objections related to exceeding the revenue neutral rate? All right, I'll take, accept a motion from the board to close public comment.
So move.
One second.
All those in favor to close public comment, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Our next job is to adopt a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The revenue neutral rate as published is forty-six point nine nine eight mils. The notice that was sent to taxpayers, the not-to-exceed rate is forty-nine point zero one six. Do you affirm, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right. So our job now is to adopt a resolution, if we are, to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt Resolution twelve dash twenty-four for Fannie County to levy a property, should levy property tax in excess of the revenue neutral rate of forty-six point nine nine eight mils for the twenty-five budget, twenty, twenty-five budget.
Is there a second?
I'll take it.
Been moved and seconded to pass Resolution twelve dash twenty-four to levy a property tax in excess of the revenue neutral rate of forty-six point nine nine eight mils for the twenty-two-five budget. Any further discussion? My discussion is this. I want to hold the mill levy to last year's rate at forty-seven point oh-three. I don't know that I'll have the votes to do it. I appreciate the citizens who came forward and spoke to us to address their concerns. Mr. Green, Mr. Gaston Slager, Mr. Overland, thank you for participating in democracy as authorized by our legislature. But I hope that each of you have heard and watched my prior comments with regard to this legislation, this creation of our state to have a second hearing on exceeding the revenue neutral rate. It's duplicitous, takes additional time, it doesn't provide any information. And I think that it's something that we can do without completely. We can have these same comments be heard when we have public hearing on our budget. Any further discussion on the pending motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. The final order of business with regard to the revenue neutral rate statute is to close the public hearing. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We have closed the hearing for the revenue-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. You need to do roll call vote to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
That is correct. So we'll go from left to right. Commissioner Davy Jones?
Aye.
Duane Dris?
Aye.
Juree Schultz, aye. Lon Pishney?
Aye.
Larry Jones?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, where are we at on time? Can we continue on with the budget for twenty-three? We have several things to do with regard to our budget hearing for twenty-two-five. The first thing is to hold a public hearing for the adoption of the budget for the use of ad valorem and other tax revenue for twenty-two-five. So I need a motion to open the public hearing to hear taxpayer objections or comments related to the twenty-two-five Fannie County budget.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Moved and seconded to hold a public hearing on the twenty-two-five budget. Any further comment? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. We'll now hear from the public with regard to the twenty-two-five budget. Anyone wish to commission, address the commission on the proposed twenty-two-five budget, including the additions requested by the sheriff and the county attorney during the last session of this commission? No one wishes to address the commission, and so a motion to close public comment?
So move.
Second?
I don't have the budget.
Mr. Gaston Slager, would you address the public and the microphone? They can't hear you without you being at the microphone. The public has a right to hear what you have to say, sir.
What is the total amount of the increase?
Do you wish to make any further comments, sir?
Well, I think it should be reduced clear down to two thousand twenty-one. That's kind of when it started getting out of hand, didn't it? Your comments?
Anyone else wish to address the commission with regard to the twenty-two-five budget? All right. Motion to close public comment on the twenty-two-five budget.
So move.
Second?
Moved and seconded to close public comment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We'll discuss the twenty-two-five budget with finance presentation. We'll hear from the finance director.
Jenny Hamel, Assistant County Administrator and Finance Director. We have presented the forty-nine point zero one six to you in work session. We have had you requested that we make some changes to that, and there has been several discussions since then as to where you would like to end up. So we are here before you today to, to see where you would like us to end up.
Well, I, I think as I was expressed during the net revenue neutral RNR, I would like to stay at forty-seven point oh-three. It may be impossible to do, given the desire of the majority of the commission to give cost of living advances or increases to valued employees, and also to meet the costs and demands of budget and maintenance. Commissioners, your, your view?
I think it's critical that we can maintain our, our mill levy at a steady basis. We've, you know, I've heard several of these people address their valuations, and, you know, as a taxing entity, we really have not much control over the valuations. That's part of the assessment process. But the mill levies, we can control. And so I would, you know, I would have to agree with the chairman. I think if we could leave the mill levy flat, that would be great.
And I would note that flat still is above the revenue neutral rate. And I think that people need to understand that this creation of this conversation with regard to revenue neutral rate is just fantasia. It doesn't make any sense. We have constitutional provisions in Kansas that real property is taxed at market rate. It's not taxed at what you think it ought to be. It's taxed at market rate. And how they determine market rate in the assessor's office is controlled by regulations from Topeka. And our packet this time was the decision of the Kansas Department of Valuation that our assessor had complied with their regulations in making the assessment of our property. And to those taxpayers whose valuation has gone up, that means your home is worth more. And I fully recognize that those taxpayers are being squeezed. But I would ask each of those taxpayers to understand that the people that work for us, two-hundred-and-ten, with a potential to have as many as two-hundred-and-sixty county employees, they are the ones that are doing the work of the county, and they deserve to be paid. One of the largest items of our budget is paying for our people. Our people deserve to be paid. I concur with the vice chairman that if we set the rate at last year's rate of forty-seven point oh-three, we'll have the room that it takes to do the things that are necessary and required. That's my ten cents worth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Fellow Commissioner Dris may want to put me on the time clock, but that's perfectly okay. I'm going to disclose right now. I'm going to exceed that time. Again, I, I made comments at another meeting, and, and when I say this about our board, I fully recognize I have been one of the board members for ten years. So I'm speaking to myself as well as to the other board members when I make these comments. And secondly, before I get into those comments, the budget that was presented to us initially was sixty-two mils, because that's what it would take to run our county effectively. And then we asked them to give us a realistic one, and that's when they came up with forty-nine mils, or thereabout, I'm rounding numbers. So we've come a long way from what it really takes to operate this county out of respect for the people who fund the county, and that's the taxpayers within Fannie County, other than some sales tax that we get that includes people out of county. Four or five years ago, we as board members endorsed or at least reinforced our administrator's process for budgeting. That process assesses county services and measures service levels based on outcomes. Also, our board developed and adopted a governance and priority document that I keep in front of me each and every meeting. And it's been revised to proactively guide the staff in developing the annual budgets. In the past few years, and particularly this year, in my opinion, we've, we, including me, have lost our focus about this process. Throughout this year's process particularly, I have experienced an uneasy feeling about the messages we're giving to staff as our focus has totally been on the mill levy number with little or no focus on the outcomes for providing the county's essential services. Certainly, we must be aware of the burden we're placing on taxpayers. I am one of those taxpayers. But we must not lose sight of producing the expected results or outcomes for services that the county's residents and businesses expect and deserve. Over the past few years, the county's fiscal committee has embraced this outcomes budgeting approach. And with maybe one or two exceptions, the county departments have bought into this, this approach as well. However, in our board budget discussions this year and last, we are producing a budget that appears only to address mill levy in RNR. Last meeting, we permitted two county department heads to address us, and we, including myself, did not recognize other departments. That approach has a negative result of pitting one county department against another and decreasing the morale of county employees. The outcomes budget approach has been very positive for the county as funds have been added to capital and equipment reserves in anticipation of future projects and issues. A recent example of a positive result from this approach is the funding for the new health department EMS building, which is already determined and identified, if you will, prior to even the ground being broken. Based on these preceding comments, fellow commissioners, I respectfully offer the following recommendations for the twenty-five budget within the parameters of our public's mill, budget mill levy. First, the sheriff's request is an extension of his twenty-four wage, twenty-two-four wage request, and there have been positive results from last year's board approval. Therefore, I support the sheriff's request to fund the second half of his wage adjustments. Secondly, I believe Public Works has diligently strived to produce the, excuse me, produce the desired outcomes, yet our board actions have actually penalized that department with a twenty-five, twenty-two-five budget that's lower than twenty-two-four. The majority of constituent calls to board members can be traced to services provided by Public Works. Therefore, secondly, I support reinstating some, if not all, of the Public Works budget request. And thirdly, as you probably recall, I was not in favor last year of the various substantial increase to Fannie County Economic Development Corporation. However, I believe workforce development is a key component to economic viability and should be specifically addressed. Because we have not included anything in the twenty-five budget to, in response to workforce requests from Western Kansas showcases and Garden City Community College, I propose that we designate fifty thousand of the three-hundred thousand allocated to economic development for one or both of these specific workforce requests. This is only a reallocation of funds and will not necessitate an adjustment to the overall budget. In addition to these three recommendations, maybe we need to go back to the outside agencies and look at them for the, from the perspective of needs versus wants. Are they needed for our county operations, or are they simply wanted and causing us to negatively affect budgets for county department, departments providing essential and mandated services? I do recognize that with some of these outside agencies, there are specific obligations, such as the, the one for the library. One thing to which we have had our eyes opened this year regards tax incentives. Tax incentives are wonderful for positive economic development. And even though our county maintains a very, very conservative tax incentive policy, incentives such as TIFs or tax increment financing can have a negative effect on total valuation for many years. Thus, I believe we must be more keenly aware of how incentives might cause issues where there is a desire to maintain level mill levies. And for the audience, and Jenny can correct me if I'm wrong, when we back out the, the TIF, the incentives, that decreases our ability by five-hundred thousand dollars of funding. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our taxable base, yes.
The taxable base is decreased by five-hundred thousand. The taxable base is decreased by 500,000. So let me ask, as we complete this 2025 budget process and strive to balance the effects it might have on our revenue producers, which are primarily comprised of property owners, with positive outcomes of services provided, are we focused on the right things? Are our actions, and again, I'm speaking to myself as I'm saying this, no judgment on any of my four fellow commissioners, it's, I'm in the mix. Are our actions based on sound rationale and outcomes produced? Or are our actions more random in the result of sending mixed signals to county administration and various departments led by both appointed and elected personnel? So I ask that you consider my comments, but I specifically ask that you consider the three recommendations that I've made. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can you get the time on that?
Yes. Did pretty good, eight minutes.
Oh, there you go. No penalty clause today?
No, no penalty clause. Mr. Dris?
Well, I don't have a written out speech like Lon does, but...
Took me a week to write that.
Did you?
Yeah.
I doubt it, but I am struggling here quite a bit. I'm looking at the 49 mills, which I think is too much, but then I look over at revenue neutral and the numbers I have in front of me, we've docked Road and Bridge 7,000, $7 million from what they requested. That's pretty significant. 90% of my phone calls deal with roads. Bother's me. Somewhere we got to, we've got, I think we need to go line item, line item as a commissioner and just kind of go that route, to go up or down from the 49 to the 46.8 or whatever it is, 46.9. I'd like, used to like to think I'm a very conservative person, but then I've also realized in this position, we've got to be responsible, responsible for the well-being of this county. We've put off a lot of things and we're paying for it now, especially in our buildings. And when you put things off year after year, pretty soon it comes back to bite us. And as most of you know, I'm chairing two building committees and we're talking some serious numbers simply because we haven't kept up with the ballgame. Having said that, I feel for every taxpayer, my appraisals go up too. I don't like it. But I think that's the penalty of being the regional center of this state. We're doing growth. Growth is a wonderful thing, but it also takes money to provide the services for that growth. I think that's where the responsibility part comes in. I have no golden answers, but I would like us, Mr. Chairman, to kind of go line item by line item in these that are presented in front of us.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I would love to stay with last year's 47.03 mills. I listen to these people and I identify with about 99% of what I heard. I have a very small home, it's less than 1,000 square feet, and last year was appraised at 213,000. My new assessed value is 268,000. That's 22.5% increase. And you can't take very many of those and afford to stay in that kind of a house. So my, I look backwards and I've owned it, no mortgage on it for years, but my, my income to pay just taxes and insurance, it takes more than $400 a month just to pay those two things on that house. So while the county's evaluation might go up, the lowering of taxes on homes is not in the picture. And somehow, I agree that we need to be able to cut somewhere, and I don't know quite what that is. What do we want to do without? And that, that's where we ask for citizen input. But if we can look over our budget and get much nearer the 47.03 and away from the 49.06 mill levy, that'll have my support.
Just for everyone's clarification, the 2023 budget was 49.946. Last year's budget was 47.309. And the proposed from staff is 49.016. That is still down .9 mills in 2023. So staff is aware of the taxpayer desire to hold the line on the rate. The valuation component of it is beyond our authority. So the rate becomes important. To address some of Mr. Commissioner Pishney's remarks is that outcomes budgeting is favored, but there are times in life where you just have to draw the line. And this board has to draw the line. Because we have that required duty, I think it is pretty easy for Jenny to go back from the 49.016, make the adjustment for the 64,000 for the sheriff. The board has not said to the county attorney what they're going to do with her request. Commissioner Jones's remarks in the last comment was to give half of that amount.
Consider half.
Consider half.
And mine, my omission is zero.
And?
Omission in my comments, I mean.
Okay. I had that question mark. I didn't know where you were going with that one. And then send the number cruncher, Jenny, I hate to say it that way, but finance directors, you get to be called that. And then crunch a budget for us. They had 47.03. You're going to have to take out the road part, road repair maintenance side of it out of Road and Bridge where most of it was done before. Include back in the sheriff's 64, and we'll decide on the county attorney. And this is the time to draw the line at 47.309. That's the chair's comment, and everybody should know that these gentlemen, they have no problem overriding me and what I want to do. So with that being said, let's go ahead and take up the sheriff's request for $64,000 additional money for the budget in a line item matter.
Mr. Chairman, I move that that request be included in the 2025 budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second to add $64,000 according to the information provided by the sheriff's office to us at our last meeting in the total amount of $64,000. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
I believe that the sheriff indicated that the current year, they could raise that immediately and fund it with the present budget. Is that not correct?
That's what he said.
Yeah, okay. And if that's the case for this year's, and looking at Steve, what if we did not fund the 64,000, would there be enough excess funds next year for them to go ahead and pay the dollar an hour they wanted to give, for example, to the eight jailers or so?
As I understood the budget request from the sheriff when I met with them was that they could do the increase in the bottom wages to get, attract jailers and clerks and so forth, they could do that effectively immediately out of 2024 budget. But to, in order to do that for next year, they need 64,000 additional dollars in the budget. So the motion is to increase it by 64,000. Is there a second?
I did.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the request to the budget of the county attorney. County attorney's request is 284,000. Half of that would be approximately 140,000. Did I get the numbers correct? Is that right, Jenny? All right. Is there a motion to increase the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget, calendar year budget, as requested by the county attorney? Hearing none, we'll leave the county attorney's budget as suggested by the fiscal committee. The public works will need to be reduced by the amount necessary to make the 47.0, 47.309. And so the public understands what the administrator and finance committee is trying to do here is, is that we have 230 miles of roads this year. We sealed and overlaid...
You're talking about blacktop?
Yes, blacktop.
Approximately 11, approximately 11 miles, we, that's for, we're able to do that after saving up three years to do that.
Correct. So in order to get down to this 47.309 area, we're going to be taking money out of Road and Bridge on the maintenance of those hard surface roads or other roads. And in years past, we've been able by excess funds at the end of the year, then fund those projects in the following year. We may be able to do some of that this year as we have in the past. But getting reduced down to 47.309 means taking the balance of those funds out of that line item that the finance committee has proposed. Mr. Administrator, have I stated that correctly?
That's correct.
All right. When it comes to accounting, I was told a long time ago that I didn't know, I wouldn't practice accounting if she didn't practice law.
Mr. Chairman, on my worksheet, they've suggested approximately 50,000 out of general fund and another 242, 224,000 out of some of the EMS budgets. So that would, you know, that's about 300,000 you don't have to take. Are you following my numbers that I'm looking at, sir?
I think your original request after the work session was to reduce the courts by 25,000 due to the law library picking up mediation. And then the 112,500 was a reduction to EMS.
And that's in the 46 something number, 46.840 number?
Did an auto emergency management, that ambulance fund take a hit too?
The ambulance is EMS and emergency management together, yes. So it was the reduction of 112,500 from the EMS personnel.
I have it listed twice in my...
That's just a, it's a summary and then which department it came out of.
I see.
So our real debate here is whether to get back to the finance committee's 46.840, or excuse me, I misstated that, the finance committee's 49.016, or hold the line at 47.309 with these adjustments that we've made thus far.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm still struggling a little bit, as I said in my prepared remarks, with regard to outcomes versus so focused on mill levy. And I want to add one additional thing that I didn't say earlier. I've tried to live by the slogan during my adult life of being respectfully bold. And I've been very respectful, but I don't know that I've been bold enough, and I apologize for coming in at this 11th hour and being more bold. But I, I'm not so focused on the 47 mills as, as you are, and I respect your position on that. I don't know that we need to be at the 49 mills as far as the dollars it produces and so forth, even though that's well under 62 mills that it takes to run this county efficiently and effectively. And on the Road and Bridge thing, real quick digression, I think you said 11 miles is what we did this year in roads and the 49 mill budget takes it down to five miles of road a year. And then the 46 mills takes it down to one mile of road per year. And just in the last meeting or two, we accepted another five miles of road from KDOT. So we're going backward as far as the road maintenance and repair and so forth and so on. And Public Works has bought into the outcomes based budgeting, and I think we're penalizing that group, as I said earlier. So I'm more in favor of if we put some money back in for Public Works, and that's what I said in my comments, either all or part of, and what mill levy would that get us to? Would that get us to 48 mills? Would that be at 47? Would it be at 49 if we put X dollars back into Public Works, leaving everything else the same in including our motion that we just passed a couple of minutes ago? Rather than trying to get it down to a mill levy of 47 point...
309.
309, which is, as the chairman accurately pointed out, is less than the 23 mill levy. And now, in the spirit of full disclosure, I understand mill levies doesn't necessarily tell you dollars being raised by taxes, and I understand that. So I would rather, Mr. Chairman, take the approach of putting the sheriff's 64,000 in, we're leaving those other couple of items out, EMS, ambulance, but we're authorizing her to put in X dollars back into, I should say, the budget for Public Works. And what mill levy does that get us to is the approach I would prefer to take.
Well, I think that we should make sure that we quantify what your request is so the record is clear. So how many miles do you want to put back in? And they can tell you what the appropriate mill levy would be to do that.
Well, or the other approach to quantify, because I appreciate that question. We took a million out.
1.1 million, yes.
1.1 million, 1.1. Say we put 50% of that back in, say 500,000 or, you know, whatever, back in. Because we know the 1.1 million in there would be five miles of road according to that budget plan. So I would be more in favor of saying, okay, if we put a half of that reduction back into Public Works, where would that get us mill levy wise?
And the 64,000 that we just passed from the sheriff?
Right, right.
I think that gets us over 49. Doesn't that get us over 49?
I don't...
It wouldn't.
No.
Well, shouldn't, but I don't know where it gets us.
The 500,000 ought to be about one mill.
About one mill.
Well, true. That's about one mill. That's true. But that'd be from 46, that'd be, so we'd be up, you know...
Why don't we run the numbers at 47.03 here as you're requesting and see what they actually are instead of estimating all these things? We need to quantify this.
All right. Well, we put quite a bit of heat on our finance director to be able to do that, but I think that we have the time and opportunity to have a good discussion, and I don't have any problem doing that, vice chairman. But I want the board to be on the same page, and it's okay to disagree on issues of budget.
If I could...
I need to be clear that if I understand what the vice chairman's saying is, if we set it at 47.309 and add the 64,000 for the sheriff in...
See exactly what, how that affects Road and Bridge and, and you've already taken some money out of EMS, so let's leave that the way it is, but see where that comes up on your Road and Bridge.
As a clarifier for the law enforcement, the dollar for their, for their additional, people that did not get it in 20, that was already included in that. So that 25,000 was already included in the number that I presented to you. What I reduced was overtime because if you budget for a full staff, you should not budget for a full amount of overtime. So the 200,000 that was reduced out of theirs was for overtime. So the two hundred thousand that was reduced out of theirs was for overtime. I did not include the thirty-seven four forty for the additional, uh, no, that's wrong. I did not include the twenty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-eight for the, to raise the deputies from the, the seven sixteen to nineteen an hour. However, those positions that are opened are budgeted at the twenty-fifth percentile, um, in case you have someone come on that is, um, has a lot of experience. So those open positions are budgeted above that nineteen dollars an hour, so their open positions are okay, but we did not calculate the twenty-seven thousand dollars that would be needed for to raise those existing people to the nineteen. But the, the dollar per hour for the eighteen or nineteen employees was included in the original forty-nine point zero one six.
So what we're asking is, is to raise it for sixty-four thousand? Take out the amount necessary out of road and bridge. Leave the twenty-five thousand out of the court's budget on the issue of mediation expense.
Mm-hmm.
A hundred and twelve thousand out of EMS.
Mm-hmm.
And tell us what the rate is.
What am I doing with Public Works?
You're reducing it, if you add in, uh, you have to take out of it in order to get to the forty-seven three oh nine.
If I'm going to forty-seven three oh nine, that's, that's where you'll be.
Correct, and so when we add the sixty-four back in, where does that put our rate?
The sixty-four plus on top of the forty-seven three oh nine? Is that what you're asking? I'm, I'm confused.
Well, that's why I'm asking for clarity. The motion that we passed was to add sixty-four thousand into the proposed
Right.
Additional funds.
Mm-hmm.
So if we don't, uh, make any adjustments to the roads in road and Public Works, where does that take us above forty-seven three oh nine? I don't think it does.
If I'm taking the full one point one still out of Public Works, it will not.
No.
No.
You'd have to add money back into Public Works to get over that forty.
Correct.
And if you budget at forty-seven three oh nine, I think Mr. Pishney's request is how much of, in order to make it balanced, what amount are we going to put back into Public Works?
It would.
Your accounts are really good at what it takes to balance.
It would be approximately the five hundred thousand, because that's what your mil is equal to, is the five hundred and
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, Twister Jones, does that address your concerns about getting?
You know, let's get some hard numbers in front of us, that I would better by visualizing them.
Mr. Dries, will that work?
Let's look ahead.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I would like to make one comment. I'm not opposed at all to the sheriff's dollar an hour raise for those people or that sixty-four thousand. But I am opposed, and I've stated it before, when we favor one department, we are doing disfavor to others. And, and I think that's what Commissioner Pishney's talking a little bit about. We've, we've taken money away from road and bridge in order to, to make things balanced, but turn around and give it to someone else, that, that creates division.
But I want to make, uh, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to make one point real clear. The sheriff's department is one of those departments that has bought into the outcomes budget process, so why should we penalize that department if they can prove to us, uh, some results, which they have, uh, over the last year?
Well, I, I, I'm going to interject, my comment is, is that roads are really important. And there's not a single commissioner up here that hasn't received a complaint about roads. Roads are really important. At the same time, the people are. And what we're doing for the sheriff is putting money back into the people. What we're ignoring and overruling is the county attorney's request for additional funding in order to be able to run the office. It does not go without thought, in my opinion, that we, uh, are asking the county attorney to do more with less. And at the same time, uh, the power of the purse and the budget first vests here. So with that regard, and with that remark, Jenny, I think that if you would tell us some hard numbers, uh, we can take a break and give you an opportunity to calculate that and tell us where that would be. Are you clear on what we're marching orders on?
No, not exactly.
Alright, well.
I don't know if you want me to go to forty-seven three oh nine, or if you want me to add a, a specific number back to Public Works.
I think what they're saying, Jenny, is forty-seven three oh nine plus sixty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, I can do that.
Well, I will let the
Well, the sixty-four.
Finance committee, uh, put that together and present it for us.
That's a very minor part of mill levy, sixty-four thousand.
Right, and then you're going to have to get a vote up here as to whether we're going to do anything with putting any additional funds in back road and bridge per Commissioner Pishney's remarks. So with that, why don't we take, uh,
Can, can I, can I get, um, clarification that you want to leave the outside agencies as they were? Because that is a voting item on here, so that we can send letters out as to their, uh, their amounts.
I know that you have to do it all together.
Yep.
But I don't know that we'll have any changes to outside agency.
Okay.
Commissioner Pishney may make his motion for his presentation today. I don't know where that's going to go.
Okay.
For now, let's find it out.
Okay, I will do that.
Commissioner Pishney, you recommended recess?
Well, but before that, I didn't know if the administrator had anything to add to this for clarification or questions about clarification.
No, I'll, I'll go ahead and, uh, work with Jenny real quick on this and take, if you'd like, we'll take a break prior to the presentation from Justice Planners.
Correct, uh, tell us on planning wise, uh, are we ready for them?
Yeah, yes.
Alright, well, we're going to take a break and we'll reconvene at ten fifteen, and we're starting with, uh, Justice Planners and then HMN Contract.
Correct.
Very good, we'll be in recess until ten fifteen.
Next on our agenda is to hear from Justice Planners in giving their report with regard to the improvements on the Law Enforcement Center or what construction we need to do and welcome back to Garden City. Sorry that you had to hear all the budget things, you're going to hear those again, but while the finance folks are working through budget issues, we'll hear from you. And I believe one of you is Mr. Alan Richardson and the other, would you introduce, please?
Absolutely. My name's Alan Richardson, this is Patrick Jablonski.
Welcome, gentlemen, and you've been working closely with Commissioner Dries, the Chair of the LEC Committee, as well as Commissioner Pishney and Robert Reese, our Administrator, and what do you have for us this morning?
Oh, what we have is, excuse me, a brief presentation, an overview of the needs assessment that we've done for the offender population in your facility here in Finney County. We did a very deep dive, in-depth presentation, a short time back. This is not going to go into that level of detail, this is going to give you more of an executive summary level of data and information. Just a quick outline, this is what we're going to be talking about over the next 20 minutes or so. What's your county population doing as a whole? What's your offender population been looking like with the levels of folks that are coming in? Why are they coming to jail? How long are they staying to jail? Who is it that's actually coming and taking up beds here? We're going to talk about how court case processing time impacts this population. We're going to touch briefly on the JDC, the Juvenile Detention Center, and give you our population forecast, a baseline as well as a couple of alternatives. What if we're able to impact this factor or that and how that may impact your future population and bed space needs? And we'll wrap up with a few conclusions to our study. And we're not advancing here for some reason. There we go. Okay, so the goals of this study is really to do a deep dive forensic reconstruction of your population. A lot of firms will take snapshot data or sample summary reports of your population. What Patrick was able to do and what the county was able to provide is line-level raw data of every arrestee and every charge over the last number of years. That's important to be able to find out exactly who is coming to your facility, not just how many, but who they actually are and why they're in there so that we may be able to address their future needs. Develop forecast scenarios, again, how many offenders and how many beds are going to be required into the future to accommodate those individuals and to help the county put together some responsible decisions on how to move forward. We came onsite back in early June and we toured the facility, obviously, and we met with quite a few different stakeholders in the local criminal justice system. What you've got on the screen is a list of all the different departments and agencies with a lot of these, there were actually multiple people that came and met with us to find out their role in the local system, their views on what's working well, what's not working so well, and to kind of get their opinion and thoughts on how to move forward. Just a sampling of some of the comments that we got from the stakeholders, and I do want to touch on these briefly. Everyone talked about the good working relationship between the police department and the sheriff's office. We heard from a lot of folks that we needed a new jail, we need one that's going to last for a while, 25, 30 years, and we need it in a different location than it's at now because there are concerns about the living environment and the working conditions in the facility now because we always have to remember to take into account not just the offenders that we're housing, but the staff that have to work in there day in and day out and spend a lot more time in the facility than the offenders do. Female inmates and offenders are all housed together for those that are kept here because they just don't have the room to properly classify and separate like the whole offender population needs to be. Able to do that a little bit more with the males, but with the females, there's just not the room and the capacity. The operational flow of the jail is not good, it was built in phases and stages and this kind of stretched out. And so it's labor and staff intensive to manage the operations from one end of the facility over to the next. And the constant waterfalls, as we heard about and as we witnessed while we were here with the five gallon buckets and the trash cans spread out through the facility and just catching the wastewater from the plumbing leaks that were there. We heard that we needed a purpose-built space for those with mental illness that were housing. We just don't have the program space, you don't have the program space, you don't have the counseling space to be able to deal with those individuals with those needs right now. Juvenile detention, the facility itself, we thought looked exceptionally good, especially for the age that it's at. It's not near capacity. There are two of the housing areas, I believe, that are not in current use for housing. One is more of a transitional program space now, but if that population were to rise, I think that facility could definitely handle that increased needs. And we did hear from several that the LEC has a lot of useful life left in it, but it shouldn't be used as a jail in moving forward. So those are the folks that we met with, some of the thoughts and opinions that we got from them moving through. That's important to get because this is a statistical exercise, but it's not just data and numbers, it's also taking the opinions and thoughts of those stakeholders, overlaying that onto the data to be able to put together a full, complete picture as to where you are now and where you need to move forward, in our opinion. With that, I'm going to ask Patrick to come up and he's going to take over and talk about all the fun numbers.
Please introduce yourself for the viewing public.
Good morning, I'm Patrick Jablonski, I'm a statistician with Justice Planners. We'll step through the statistical analysis. Before I dive into that, I just want to express my gratitude towards a variety of people here. Beth Beavers and her staff supplied us with a significant amount of data very quickly, the sheriff's office as well. Everybody was just incredibly cooperative and enabled us to do a fairly quick turnaround with the analysis for you. One of the people that we dealt with was Shannon Dick, who I found gave us an incredibly creative approach, a very cutting-edge way of looking at population growth. It was one of the things during our onsite back in June that I think about 90% of the people with whom we visited said, you might want to talk to Shannon Dick. And we don't necessarily trust the population projections that are publicly available from other entities. And so I was a little bit skeptical, but after several conference calls with him, I was won over. And really, the result of that series of conversations is the graph that's on the screen now. The growth rate for Finney County is significantly higher using the modeling from the Finney County Economic Development Corporation. There's a range that we were supplied that called for a quarter-century growth rate of between 23 and 52%. And so we took the middle ground of that, which is approximately 38%. Now, that's kind of gives us the 45,000-foot view of really the context for the county. County population is a predictor of growth for a correctional facility and for the business of law enforcement, but is not the most important predictor, certainly for a jail population. And so we turn to the jail population itself. A graph here looks like a line, but those are individual dots representing every single day between January 1st of 2018 and early June of 2024. And they, you know, all those dots pop out in a line and a couple of things stand out. You can see the impact of several waves of the COVID-19 epidemic, and then when we work through '22 and '23, we see a significant rate of growth, which has flattened during 2024. The table in the bottom right shows you the annual population. ADP stands for average daily population. You can see at the end of this data, in 2024, the population has leveled off somewhat from 2023. As we will see, that's not necessarily the guidance of our forecast models. Every single jail population in existence is predicted really by two things. The number of people coming into the facility and how long those individuals stay. And so we look at those things in turn. This graph represents the average daily number of bookings into the Finney County jail. We see the increase coming out of the Delta wave of the pandemic in fall of 2020, and we see a significant sustained period of growth between January of '21 up until about this time of last year. Those numbers have leveled off, it's our guess, looking, excuse me, at some of the law enforcement staffing numbers that we see the leveling off might be actually due to a flattening of the number of law enforcement officers on the street. But on an average daily basis, we see that bookings have well rebounded from the pandemic, they're not quite back to where they were in 2018 or 2019, but the pace of that certainly a year ago was spelling really a period of significant return and growth in the number of people coming to the facility. When I plot the population on a daily basis of the jail against the bookings on an average daily basis, those two trends march in lockstep, the blue line and the black line. If you look at the dotted lines, that gives a statistical trend that summarizes the data, you can see that they both march fairly well together. And really, bookings predict the level of population in the facility. We have the small decrease in bookings in 2024 year-to-date, and the average daily population of the facility has followed suit. So that's one of our predictors. The other predictor is how long the detainees inside the facility stay. This graph could be anywhere in the United States. You see a spike around the first wave of COVID, that has happened to every single place where we have worked in the past five years or four years. The national average length of stay numbers very much mirror this. Really what you need to understand, the takeaway from this chart, is if you compare the level of average length of stay before that spike, before the pandemic hit, and look at the level after, there is a base increase in average length of stay. The table on the bottom right provides confirmation of that. The average length of stay in 2018 was 14 days on average, and now it is 20 coming out of 18 last year. And so the length of time that individuals are staying is increasing incrementally, it's at a higher level than it was. So really, the reason that the population of the jail hasn't grown significantly during 2024 is that the number of inputs into the system, the bookings, has leveled off during 2024. The sheriff's department and sheriff's office has caught frankly a break during 2024 that arrests haven't remained at the level that they were prior. A couple of things about the population. First of all, the population that is served by the facility is a lot more serious in terms of the humans that are coming in compared to 10 years ago, compared to five years ago. You have a higher proportion of individuals charged with a felony crime versus somebody who's charged with a misdemeanor. The red line on this chart gives you the average daily count of the number of individuals who are charged with a violent felony. You can see that that number is higher than it was on a pre-pandemic basis. So we're seeing a growth in terms of the number and proportion of individuals who are charged with more serious offenses. The other thing that I think is a good takeaway is that as part of our data reconstruction of the life of the facility over the last five, six years, we did a recidivism study. It was basically a count of if you were arrested in 2018, we simply asked the data, did you come back and when did you come back? And so the first three rows, first four rows of the table provides us a look at the number of returns to the Finney County jail. Let's just, so there's a lot on this table, and so to hopefully clarify it, let's go to 2018. There were almost 3,000 bookings for the year involving 2,040 people. And so right off the bat, you know that you have some individuals who are coming back to jail during that year more than once. People who returned during, within a three-year period, which is kind of the national standard for understanding what recidivism looked like, of the 2,040 individuals booked during 2018, 933 or 45.7% returned. And then that percent of people returned all time is, looks through the data all the way until June of 2024, and you can see that it's over 50% of the individual humans booked during 2018 have come back during that almost six-year period. Final takeaway from this is if you look at the row for 2021, for whatever reason in the system, and I think we have some theories that we spelled out in our report, the three-year return rate escalates significantly, that a lot more individuals are coming back into custody post-pandemic than they were pre-pandemic. In terms of predicting the population of the facility, really the keys to the kingdom for understanding any facility lays with the business of the courts. And so we were able to secure an extract of data from the state courts that told us a variety of things, including how long it took for individuals to have their cases processed through the courts. The graph here gives us the felony court case processing time in days expressed on a median basis. And you can see that it grows post-pandemic. That spike with the pandemic is something that we see everywhere. And generally, Finney County has been very fortunate that the median processing time has stayed below 200 days, as long as it has. Just about everywhere we've worked, we've seen processing times that exceed a year on an average basis, and Finney County hasn't even seen that level yet. But you can see the rate of growth is concerning, it's taking longer to dispose of felony cases. Now, why this is important is that it impacts how long individuals stay in custody. Now, off that first blush, when you compare my orange line, average length of stay of the jail, with the blue line, there's not a very strong relationship here from what it looks like. But if you look at felony case processing time versus jail felony average length of stay, you can see that there is a stronger relationship, certainly for the last 12 months. This is more of an apples-to-apples comparison on this chart, and it forms the basis for some of our modeling coming down. If I remove the noise from the chart, I think the trend lines here spell out what the story is, certainly for the last year, is a year to 15 months, is that the felony case processing time as it has increased is boosting the average length of stay for the jail, which is putting pressure on the population to grow. Again, step back to my comments about bookings and arrests flattened during 2024, which kept the population in check. As a side note, that's why you do a deep dive into a jail population, because if you only looked at the population count and the booking count, it's telling you a story that might not concern you as a body because the number is flat for the last 12 months. The problem is the pressure that's building under the surface is such that it's taking longer to get cases disposed of a population of more serious individuals who are coming to the jail in increasing numbers. And that lends us some concern. As part of our agreement with the county, we looked at the juvenile detention center and we did a full population statistical analysis. The monthly average daily population at the JDC, we split two ways. First of all is absolutely everybody, which is the blue line. The orange line are the individuals who are really Finney County individuals. And so that's what we call the Finney Responsible Population. The takeaway here is that there's a gradual decline in the population of the juvenile detainees. This is, again, something that we see on a nationwide basis. However, what we are starting to see is the quote-unquote pendulum of juvenile justice swinging back, such that it would not entirely surprise me at all in the state of Kansas to see these numbers start to go back to where they were a decade ago. And we're seeing a little bit of noise along those lines. I come from Nashville, Tennessee. The state of Tennessee, if you were to look at the juvenile centers there, the graph is very similar to this. And we're probably two or three years ahead of Kansas, I think, in terms of our population dynamics, and we're already seeing a rebound in the average daily population of individuals held in custody. The inputs into the JDC are not very surprising, given what you just saw on the previous slide about the population, you have fewer individuals coming into custody. The orange line is the Finney Responsible Population, and it is maybe one or two individuals coming in on a month- coming in on a monthly basis into the JDC. The length of stay is all over the map, really because you don't have that many people involved, and it messes up your averages here. And that's why the numbers are so dynamic from 2020, 21 on. We will cover the JDC forecast at the end of our population forecasts. And so now we look at the population forecast for the jail. Before I do so, a couple of caveats. When the population forecast was built, it's really only as good as what I knew on the day that I made the models for the data. In other words, if the state legislature makes a major public policy change in three years, I don't know about it. I don't have a crystal ball. So we try to build in some flexibility into our modeling that takes into account the potential for a random shock, is what a statistical nerd would call it. Basically, this is a, a series of models that would try to predict outlying years. Essentially, with our modeling process, we will run as many as 10,000 simulations of the future and pick the best fitting one as our model. The hurricane map here is essentially back in 2004, when I lived in Florida, we thought we were safe from a hurricane. The hurricane was going up the eastern seaboard. And then if you look at the track, it did a U-turn and came right over our house about two weeks later. No forecaster saw this coming. They don't have a crystal ball with the weather. We don't with correctional forecasting either. However, we can tell you what all the guidance suggests based on what we know on the day that we know it. Here is the status quo forecast. The blue line is the actual historical average daily population of the facility from January 18 up until June of 2024. Our status quo forecast assumes that nothing changes from the way it stood in, in really late June, early June of 2024. The average length of stay is, is slated to continue to grow slightly, and we are going with a bookings increase of 23%. Essentially, what we do with our modeling is we model the average length of stay separately. We model the bookings separately, and we use predictors for that. Population growth impacts what our, our bookings numbers would be to an extent. We look at the historical trend of bookings to model that. Average length of stay, we obviously look at, at court case processing and the prior history of average length of stay. So once we make those multiple models, our final forecast for the status quo calls for this. The average daily population a quarter century from now is 149, about give or take 30 more than what you're seeing so far during 2024. Now, to bridge the gap in logic between the average daily population of people to the actual beds you would have to plan for, for a facility requires us to take two steps. The first step is acknowledging that the number, the average, is just that, an average. When I say there's going to be 149 people on average in 2049, there's going to be days where you're going to have, say, 170 people. You're going to have days where you're only going to have 130 people. You need to be able to plan bed space for those days where you have those 170 people. There are times of the year that are busier for jails, typically about this time of the year, when the, the weather is warm, people are coming to jail in, in greater numbers. Really, around the country, September and October are some of the busiest times of the year. And so that factor is called a peaking factor. And we can actually go into the numbers and figure out what the peak population levels are for the Finney County Jail. And we can do it on, in two methods. First of all, we do it for females, and we calculate that at a 22%. And then 10.2% for males. So that's one of the factors we have to do to bridge from the average population to the number of needed beds. The second factor is what we call a classification factor. In order to maintain a safe and secure housing environment for the detainees, the sheriff's office needs space within the facility to move people. You don't want to keep people of wildly different custody risks in the same cell, right? You don't want somebody charged with a, a homicide housed with somebody who's in on a, a public nuisance and, and has a clean criminal history. You don't want to put rival gang members or known enemies in the same housing unit. And so to keep individuals separately in an appropriate manner, you need space within the facility. Our rule of thumb here is a 15% cushion needs to be built in the bed count. So that gives us this potentially confusing table. Let's look at the top row. For 2029, the left side is females, which we've shaded with gray. The average daily population for 2029 females is modeled to be 21. We add five for that peaking factor of 22%. Then we add three for the classification factor of 15%. That gives us a bed need of 29. In other words, to safely and securely house 21 females, five years from now, you will need 29 beds. We do the same logic for males, going from an average daily population of 96 for the males to 121 needed beds. The right two columns on the end provide us the wrap-up. The average daily population that is forecast five years from now is 118. The number of beds to maintain safety and security would be 150. If you look a quarter century from now, the very bottom right two numbers there, my average daily population from our forecast is 149. However, you would need 190 beds to safely and securely house that number of people. Now, we did several scenarios when we modeled the data. Again, we did 10,000, 10,000 likely possible outcomes of what the, the, the models would, would show us. There are a couple of forecast scenarios that we need to talk about. One that was fairly intriguing is I removed all the predictors from the series, and I just looked at the history of the average daily population. And this one caught my eye because if you do the arithmetic behind why, how that orange graph gets to where it is, bookings would have to increase 38%. Now, 38% is exactly what our population assumption would be on my first really substantive slide of this presentation, right? The, the slated free world population growth of Finney County, we pegged at 38%. We did not use population growth in this particular model. This is just what the average daily population, if left to its own devices and all things being equal, would actually do for the facility. The, the diagnostics behind this model are actually fairly solid, and it's not that bad in, in terms of an overall model of the population. The average daily population for this one is 170. We do the same logic with peaking and classification. And the bottom line here is 213 beds necessary to maintain safety and security for the 167 detainees. A third forecast model, our second alternative, basically plays a what-if game. Assuming bookings increased 23% over time, which is what most of our modeling would indicate for bookings, we set average length of stay at 18 days, which is below what it is now, kind of what it was a year ago or two years ago. If you could stick, keep average length of stay at 18 days, the population flattens significantly, such that the average daily population is not that much higher than what it is now. And you can see the peaks and valleys in that forecast going off for the next quarter century. The bottom line here is 165 beds necessary to safely house those 130 individuals. So we have three scenarios. What we are calling the status quo forecast with 190 bed need, and then our two scenarios, one with a, a bookings rate of, of 38%, which correlates very nicely to what the free world population number is showing. And then one that's calling for a more muted increase in the, the bookings rate, plus a reduction in the average length of stay for the facility. Juvenile detention center. This was very hard to model this because the numbers for the facility for the past couple of years are so low. It was tricky to come up with a statistically defensible model. If you look at the spread and the numbers on the forecast, it looks like a, a heart rate graph, you know, that you would get from the hospital in EKG, where somebody got very stressed out, I think. And you can see that the, kind of the sine wave there, that there's a significant spread in the peaks. But then remind yourself what the scale is. If you look at the, the scale of this graph, we're talking a spread between, say, two detainees and maybe five detainees on an average daily basis. It's a little hard to, to model this. And, and again, I think in a lot of ways, this number ultimately, 25 years from now, will be determined really by state policy and public policy in general regarding the housing of individuals under 18. We applied the same peaking and forecast classification factors that we did for the adult jail, and we come up with a bed need of about 12, which is significantly less than the current facility. So county is rapid, rapidly growing. We think that will put pressure on arrests and bookings, which will increase the, the number of people coming into the, the facility. Criminal court case processing, particularly, particularly for felony matters is increasing, which puts pressure on the jail's average length of stay, which in turn puts pressure on the average daily population. So if bookings rebound to where they were prior to the pandemic and where we think they are going, we believe that the average daily population of the jail will grow just like this community is growing as well. There are a number of things the system can do to blunt the increase in the average length of stay in terms of felony case processing. And this jurisdiction is doing a lot of very creative things already, trying to, to manage those things. And so after our preliminary presentation, there were several discussions. The consensus, consensus decision was a 200-bed target capacity for the facility based on our modeling. And that is the, the statistical presentation in a nutshell, easy for me to say.
Are you tired? That was good. He, he talks a little fast.
Yeah, but that was the right speed. That was the right speed.
I, I think the key takeaway from the very last bullet that we had up there is after preliminary presentation, there was a consensus decision made of a ballpark of about 200 beds. Patrick made one point in the presentation about the projection models is that we don't have a crystal ball. This is based off of what we, off of what we know and all the information we have today. And so that's why we did three different models, three different projections there. Then we had a conversation. We're, we're not saying your bed is, your bed need is going to be X because we don't have that crystal ball. But with those factors laid out, that prompted a really good discussion among the jail working group there that, that reached, I believe, a, a pretty good consensus of the ballpark of 200 beds spaces need, needed in moving forward. Even with the lowball in projection, that's, that's a need for greater capacity than you have today. The facility that you have today is, is probably served its, its purpose, its, its useful purpose now. With the layout, with the infrastructure, plumbing needs and issues and, and electrical and everything, we, we, we don't know how many more Band-Aids can be put on that facility moving forward. So with that, we're more than happy to entertain any questions that you may have about our presentation.
Thank you. I'll defer immediately to the chairman of the LEC Building Committee, Commissioner Dries.
I think for the community's benefit, this may be a little bit of shock while even we're looking at this. And so I want to start over a little bit from ground one. Our current bill, building has exceeded its useful life. Just about every part of it needs to be replaced or fixed. When, I word it this way, the jail is on the top floor in case the community does not know that, which is probably not a good place to put a jail. It's been proven. I think when our misbehaviors are guessed and, they get very creative in what they can do in their spare time. And as a result, currently, our administration, both sheriff and police, are getting regularly rained on by gray water. So we have a severe problem with this current facility. As Alan mentioned, it has exceeded its useful life. We can fix this building, but it will cause, take a large number. Sean over here is giving a number, and it's kind of a spooky number. And then when he turns around and say it's probably a 20-year fix. That is why there's a committee formed approximately, not 20 of us, thereabouts. And we're, we're charged with what is truly the best option for our community long-term. And that is why Justice Planners was brought into the picture to give a handle. And that presentation by Patrick there was very thorough. And there's parts of our community that do not believe our population is going to grow. And Patrick is very adamant, and he has, this is his profession, and he's got data that just amazes you. We will be a growing community. So that is why we are looking at this project. And I think Patrick and Alan have done a fantastic job for, for our community and what they presented us. And that is my comments for the moment.
Mr. Chairman. Well, as someone who's sat in on most of the meetings, I didn't make them all, I don't think. But just to add to one thing that Dwayne said, and I think it was said earlier, maybe by you, Alan, that the building itself is structurally okay, but not for a jail. And part of the reason you just mentioned is where the jail is located in the building. So there's, again, for the viewing public and for the people in this room, there's the, if, if the jail is moved, which we believe it should be, there's a reason, there's reasons that this building could be repurposed for other uses or sold or whatever. We have, we have had no conversations about that. But structurally, it appears to be pretty sound, but not for a jail and for our law enforcement people maintaining that jail.
Thank you. I forgot to give acknowledgement to Commissioner Pishney of his service on that building committee. And we really appreciate Commissioner Dries and Commissioner Pishney attending all those meetings, and they're not done yet. However, both of them are leaving the commission before that we're going to move any dirt. So I encourage you and ask you to continue to serve until your term expires or the time comes for Mr. Pishney, our commissioner, to ascend to our Kansas legislature, and maybe he can correct some of the things that we've talked about this morning.
His list.
He, he's going to have a list, folks.
I've got a notebook full already.
All right. Well, any other comments I could, to the right, Commissioner Jones?
I, I'll, you know, this is the great way of looking at this facility, you know? I don't know how they did in the past, but you know, just looking at it, you can see where they just said, well, if we just add here to the side, we just Band-Aid it on. I don't know if they had a deep dive like you guys presented, and I think that's what we needed. And that's what the taxpayer deserves, you know? We're going to have to, we're going to have to go to the voters and ask them on this one, for sure. And if we don't have hard numbers for them, it's going to be awful hard for them to convince them that, you know, what it's going to cost, you know, and, and what it would cost to fix that facility, to make it usable. And, you know, I think it's, those are the type of numbers that we need. And, and the taxpayers deserve them.
Right, very good. Yes, sir. Commissioner Jones?
Can you explain kind of a, of an interesting fact here that, or a lack of fact maybe that has come up? The school district thinks our population's going down. Shannon Dick, economic development, and, and you folks think it's going up. Who's right? I mean, my, my question, I guess, is where, where are they drawing their statistics from, their, their information that would be different than what you are?
Yeah, I have not seen exactly what the school board statistics looked at. I, I can tell you that early on in our analysis, actually before we came on site, we pulled the Wichita State University population growth numbers. And those, those numbers were significantly lower than, than what we ended up going with. Generally speaking, state demographic centers will use US Census tract numbers to at least provide initial guidance and context for their numbers. And, and looking at the individual census tract data for Finney County did not give me any sense of confidence in the, the quality of those numbers, just seeing what was happening with the raw data. At that point, listening to Mr. Dick's analysis of cellphone data certainly, I think, is a great way of, of looking at things. And, and face it, the, the numbers coming from an entity such as, such as Wichita State or the Census Bureau is very much based on some citizen
is very much based on some citizen estimates, whereas the cellphone data is actually tied to people. I think Alan's only got one phone. I've only got one phone. There's people who have two or three. There's probably some that are nefarious who have like five or six. But generally speaking, I love that logic, that the more devices that you have equates to more bodies being in the jurisdiction. And what really drives it home for me is those are bodies that by definition get missed oftentimes by an organization such as the Census Bureau, because not all of those individuals are registered to vote or are official citizens. They are here, and they come in contact with the justice system from time to time. And so I love that approach. Don't know what the school board did, but I think this approach is solid.
It's just an interesting comparison.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Yes, sir.
Question. Alan, you guys get a survey a lot of communities across the United States. How many have you run into other issues or other areas that are similar to this or not? That would, you know, we could equate to what they did or what?
In terms of the condition of their existing, it runs the gamut. We're working with a large jurisdiction in Florida right now that the sheriff desperately wants a new jail. We toured it, and most of the people we've worked with would give their left arm to have the facility they have now. We're about to kick off one in Mississippi. Probably going to be one of the worst facilities that we've seen before. They would probably give their left arm to have yours now. So it really does run the gamut there. But I can say from not just the stakeholders that we interviewed, but from what we saw ourselves on the tour, from the vehicular Sallyport to the layout of intake and housing stretching from far left to far right, it's not an efficient design if all the plumbing and lights work properly. It's just not an efficient design right now. But you layer on all the infrastructure needs, and it's time to do something.
Sure.
One of the things that really struck me about this facility is compared to others is really not necessarily the correctional facility itself, but what's happening underneath it, that when we're seeing computer workstations with plastic sheeting and tarps on them is generally indicative of a major problem. I haven't really seen that one place in Wisconsin that they had to do it, and they're building a facility right now because of that issue.
Anything else, Commissioner? Commissioner Dries?
I'd like to clarify one thing. This existing building we have is structurally, and it looks great. If we are fortunate enough and taxpayers agree, I would very much encourage the jail part of it to move. But I would like to also point out that the existing building could be refurbished and planned to be refurbished for administration. It does not mean the police and sheriff administration get a whole new facility. We're hopefully that this current building can be refurbished for the administration side of it. And we're strictly talking jail and supporting features that are unique to a jail to move.
If I may say to that end, when I was saying it's not appropriate for today's use, it's for today's use as a jail. A lot of, the example I use when I do instruction a lot is a jail is going to age in an average of three and a half times the rate of a typical county building. It's open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and with a tough clientele there, with the wear and tear and the usage. A thirty-year-old jail is more like a hundred-plus-year-old facility. And so to make the investment to bring it up to par for continued use as a jail would probably be throwing good money after bad. If you relocate the jail, could it be brought up to par or standard for another less intensive, not punitive, use? I don't see why it couldn't. I mean, like you say, it's a good-looking building. And we heard that from a lot of people that we talked with.
Right. Anything else?
If you, when you build new facilities, you know, strictly jail and not all the things that go with the jail, you know, all the different administrations, a green slate per se, is that, that's more cost-effective than everything that goes with it and then or not? I don't know.
Tell me about everything that goes with it.
Yeah, I'm talking about if you put all the administration and all the everything right there in the same facility.
Like it is today.
Yeah, like it is today. Building the jail separately would be...
If you build that jail, though, you'd probably want the kitchen to go with it and the laundry and a few of those things.
Oh, well, of course. But I mean, I'm just not getting the weeds, but you know, per square footage cost would be less than if you put everything else in one facility.
Your most expensive per-square-footage cost is going to be for the jail itself. Absolutely.
So in summary, so everybody that's listening, your recommendation is a two-hundred-bed facility?
That was the consensus decision of the jail working group, which we concur with.
One more quick question.
Go ahead.
On juvenile, the current facility has the capacity to handle the population growth, correct?
We think so.
Because, you know, we partner with twelve other counties on that facility.
Right. Yeah, and as Patrick pointed out, of the population that they do house right now, it's in the low single digits that are Finney County responsible youth that are held there.
Well, I think kudos on that has to go to law enforcement, both city and county, on elimination of our gang violence, and also to the prosecutor's office, making sure those people don't have a fertile environment. People have worked pretty hard at making sure that occurs. All right. Anything else for these folks?
Mr. Chairman, there is a motion required, and I will move that we approve and accept this final report on the LEC from Justice Planners as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded to accept this report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, men.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. While I know that we have taxpayers here that would like to hear the rest of the budget discussion, we have experts here from HMN Architects on this very subject that we just covered with Justice Planners, and we will hear from Sean Harding. Please announce yourself for the viewing public and why you're here.
My name is Sean Harding with HMN Architects, and we focus on justice work in other institutional occupancies. I believe I was brought here today because of a proposal that we put in front of the board regarding program. And a program is a tool that we use to itemize rooms that are necessary for the function of a new building or, in the case of the law enforcement center, an existing building for repurposing that. And they define a quantity, square footage, and then the defined purpose of that space. So from our committee meeting that we had, the last one, we were asked to put a number together for what it would take to get a program put together for both the law enforcement center and for a jail. And that is what I supplied you guys on the fourteenth. And then we were also discussing, and I was asked to put a proposal together for a small fix within the existing facility to help with some of the water issues. And it was to put together a package that the county could use for bidding purposes that would seal some cracks, holes, and cover the flooring area with a product that should help reduce the amount of water that makes it from one floor to the other.
Okay, so if I'm understanding your, the scope of your proposal is to look at building a new jail facility with two hundred beds?
A program for that facility.
Program for that facility and for repurposing the law enforcement center.
Correct.
And the rates are disclosed in the package that we received and need an authorized person to sign the contract if the commission is so inclined to engage HMN to do this next step planning?
There is a not-to-exceed amount on that agreement of fifteen thousand dollars for that portion of the programming for that project. The other agreement that Sean spoke about, we can take that up. It's a ten-thousand-dollar contract with them. We can take that up with our maintenance department and just make that happen there to, in essence, have him craft some specifications for that, that they can do some coding on that floor to help reduce, probably not entirely eliminate, but reduce the infiltration as an interim step during this process.
Okay, so not to exceed in fifteen thousand plus an additional ten thousand of maintenance, which you're going to handle through the maintenance budget already in existence?
Correct. Yeah.
And we don't need to vote on the ten-thousand-dollar part of the contract, do we?
No, this one here is just, no, you do not. The agreement with HMN to do the programming step is one that you should probably go ahead and as a next step in this process.
All right. Questions?
My, just a clarification. Would the chair would need to sign that contract for the fifteen thousand, not to exceed?
Either the chair or authorize myself, one of the two.
Okay. I didn't know if there was a requirement, one way or the other.
I have one question. What are the timeframes we're talking about here between Justice Planners, their plan and yours and so on? Are we talking yet this fiscal year or?
Timing on programming on this?
Yeah, I think we can actually achieve that this year. There's going to be some interviewing that has to take place with the user groups that are in the building to find out exactly what they need in their space. And I don't, I'm actually working in conjunction with Justice Planners on this, so I think that can be done. I'm obviously much closer than South Carolina, and so I will probably do more of the interview process here in Garden City.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions with regard to the item on our agenda?
I'd offer a motion if you'd like.
Would you please?
I'll offer the motion that we approve the agreement and who's going to sign it? Is that Robert?
Administrator.
Administrator will be empowered to sign the agreement with HMN for a contract.
And not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars?
Correct.
And I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract as proposed with a not-to-exceed amount of fifteen thousand. We'll also keep in mind that the administrator and HMN are going to spend already budgeted money out of the maintenance budget for an additional ten thousand dollars, which is not part of this motion, but this is part of the services that HMN is going to provide to Finney County and its residents and taxpayers. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I just would make one thing, clarification on, I didn't explain to you exactly the program. What it does is allows us to come up with a square footage for a building, which would allow us to come up with budget numbers, which is something you're going to need when you go into the referendum process. It also helps us with understanding adjacencies and how the building would go together. So it's a useful tool for, as we move forward with this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Administrator is authorized to sign your contract.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us back to the one business item on our agenda is finalization of the 2025 budget. Jenny, you have the floor. What are you presenting to us?
Passing around with the adjustments that you requested brings the mill levy to forty-seven point three seven zero.
Would you point out the adjustments that you have made, please?
To get to this point, I added back to get to the forty-seven point three oh nine, added two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars back to Public Works, and then added the additional sixty-four thousand for the sheriff's office. This still reduced the hundred and twelve thousand out of EMS and the twenty-five thousand out of the courts budget as previously requested.
So, Mr. Chairman, question for Jenny. So if we were to reinstate five hundred thousand for Public Works, that would be another half-mill because you've already put in two hundred and fifty. Is that right?
If you added another five hundred thousand?
No, total of five hundred thousand, because didn't you say?
Correct, yeah.
Put in two fifty or thereabouts?
Yes, that's approximately a half a mill, yes.
Half-mill would reinstate five hundred thousand to the budget.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Let me get to our worksheet on the 2025 budget. All right, we've already conducted our public hearing. We're now at the finance presentation. Bottom line of forty-seven point three seven mills, which would be up very little, point oh seven.
Point six one, yeah. Point zero six one.
Zero six one.
Correct.
I would suggest to those taxpayers in attendance that that is a nominal increase of the rate on ad valorem taxes, given the fact that we have five hundred thousand dollars less in useful valuation for revenue in which to run the county government. I may be ahead of myself, but I would think that we should entertain a motion to approve the budget as presented. Then we, oops, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. We'll get to that at the end. And then we need to take up whether we're going to have any changes in outside agency funding. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there any desire of any commissioner to change any of the outside agency funding?
Let me clarify, please. To get that number, you took about one point two million out of general fund?
No, that was the, the forty-nine oh one six had the one point one million from the Public Works. You requested that it be added back into the general fund to, until we came to this point. So that's just taking that one point one out of there and putting the two hundred and seventy-six back in to Public Works. So the general fund is as it was originally proposed to you in the work session minus the twenty-five thousand for the courts?
I guess I was referring back to the forty-nine mill that was presented earlier.
Yes, and, yes, but that was after the work session you had asked me to put it in the general fund. So that's where it resided until this point.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Jenny, with your help a little bit, and Sam or whoever's running the computer, if we could go to page seventy of our packet? Answer to your question, Mr. Chairman, I am wondering whether there's any room in the outside agencies that we could free up another hundred thousand or so for Public Works, because the two hundred and fifty or sixty thousand, whatever Jenny said, you know, putting that back in, that's a good move for a department that's based on, has bought into the outcomes-based budgeting, but it still doesn't get us anywhere close to taking care of the miles of roads and stuff that we need. So I just wanted to have that on the screen so that we can look at it, because there's not any room in the library, for example. We're under contract with that. I don't know if there's enough room out of aging or some of the others. And Compass, the mental health issues, one that I know we're all passionate about. mental health issues, one that I know we're all passionate about trying to address, and that, and, excuse me, for those listening, Compass, public health, so forth, those are all mandated, you know, we are mandated to take care of health issues in the county, and Compass is a part of that, I should clarify. Stevie B shouldn't, in my opinion, shouldn't even be on this list, I know we do it for a reason, but it doesn't affect no levy at all, so that, that distorts this list just a little bit, but, but if, if the rest of my fellow board members felt there was a way to free up some money and from here to, and restore a little bit more to public works, I'd be interested in that conversation.
Gentlemen, I ask you to speak up with regard to that, Commissioner Pishney, you're free to make a motion to reduce any of these outside agency budgets or allocate accordingly, but I'm not in favor of changing the outside agency funding at this point in time. I think that was a great discussion to have during our work session and so forth, but the time has come to pass the budget. So I invite your motion, if you wish to make it.
I'm interested in hearing from the others.
Okay, I've said my piece, Commissioner Vice Chairman Jones, please take the floor.
We discussed these outside agencies at length during our work sessions, and some of them we cut back and some of them we didn't, I think we, one of the questions we kept asking them, if you're duplicating services, and we tried to stay away from duplication. I, I think that everybody's worked hard at presenting these numbers, and I'm kind of like, I'm going to agree with the chairman.
Mr. Dreese?
I'm comfortable with what's just been presented, again, I'm, I'm still troubled with the condition, or, or road and bridge department, like I said earlier, nine out of ten of my calls are about roads, and they're going to, it's simply going to increase, our roads will not, will not improve, they're going to probably step backwards again, so out of radio land, your road grader is not going to go by any, any quicker, it'll be a little slower.
Mr. Jones?
I agree with your earlier statement about adopting what's been presented, the road and bridge budget, we could allocate half of our total budget to them and they would still be short on money to take care of all of the roads, so I'd be willing to offer a motion if you're ready.
Well, I think we wanted to address this issue first with the outside agencies, do you have any desire to change outside agency funding as presented?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Back to you, Commissioner Pishney.
Oh, there's a couple of, but I don't know that it's significant and, and it's the consensus of the board not to, so I can live with that.
All right, I don't want to be seen as not allowing someone to make a proper motion when they want to, now's a good time if that's what you want to do.
Well, you're asking for a motion with regard to outside agencies, correct?
Yes, I am, any changes to that part of the budget? All right, on our flow sheet, outside funding, agency funding as presented for a total of three point four one five one nine seven.
Excuse me, question back to you, my suggestion was on the three hundred thousand going to economic development, it doesn't change the budget number, but I did suggest designating up to fifty thousand for workforce, so I don't know how that enters into the motion you're asking for.
Well, that would be a change from what's presented.
But it doesn't change that bottom number, is I guess what I'm saying.
You're asking it to be allocated differently, I think we need to have cash basis and budget stated clearly, so if you're going to change its funding, I think you need to do it by motion.
Well, I would, before the overall outside agency motion, then, based on what you just said, I would move that we designate up to fifty thousand for workforce efforts in the county, and I would, I would suggest that fifty percent of that go to the workforce showcase, I mean, the Western Kansas showcases, and fifty percent to the training that's going on at Garden City Community College.
Is there a second to that motion? That motion fails for failure of a second. Is there a motion to approve the twenty-five outside agency funding as presented for a total of three point four one five one nine seven without change to allocation?
So offered.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve outside agency funding as presented for a total of three point four one five one nine seven as presented and itemized. Any further discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On the workforce fifty thousand dollar, did we already make a commitment to take that out of what was, little was left out of ARPA funding or?
No.
Some other fund? Pardon?
ARPA fund is gone, Commissioner Jones, and we're scheduled to take up work showcase funding out of the general fund September sixteenth.
It's been taken care of?
Not yet.
No.
It's not going to be in the 2025 budget, we'll take it out of general fund if the majority of the commission approves.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking, okay, thank you.
And I was simply trying not to affect the budget either year, yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2025 outside agency funding as presented for the amount stated, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
On our checklist, we'll hear any additional public comment to the adjusted proposed 2025 budget, we need to open it up for public comment, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
I would believe so, since it's.
Been adjusted?
Adjusted.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reopen the public comment for the adjusted proposed budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to take additional public comment to the adjusted 2025 budget, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Now it's an opportunity for anyone from the public to address the commission regarding the adjusted 2025 budget. Having no response from the public or from anyone here, let's go on to the motion to adopt the 2025 budget.
Mr. Chairman, you want to close the hearing?
Well, on our checklist, it says to close the hearing after we have approved the budget.
All right, thank you.
I, I think we should close public comment, but that's not the way the flow sheet says to do it. So is there a motion to adopt the 2025 county budget with an estimated mill levy of?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven point three seven zero, which is a point zero six one increase.
I'll offer that motion.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a budget of a mill levy of forty-seven point three seven zero with the changes that were made today, which is a point zero six one mill levy increase. Any additional comments from the commission? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to close the public hearing?
So offered.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing on the adoption of the 2025 budget, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Our job now is to file the budget with the clerk, deliver a copy of the signed resolution with the roll call vote, and this must be filed with the clerk no later than October one, 2024, we passed the resolution, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
And is there any other budget items or resolutions that need to be done?
Question, question to either Dory or Jenny, and, or to you, Mr. Chairman, does the budget have to be roll call vote as well? Okay, I just want to make sure.
Net revenue neutral had to be roll.
That was roll call, but I wanted to make sure we had crossed all our i's, or crossed all our t's and dotted all our i's.
All right.
Thank you.
That closes our discussion today of our business agenda. Did I miss anything, Mr. Administrator? All right, yes, sir?
I'd like to offer my appreciation to staff, this is a booger, and I know you've put a lot of time and effort in these numbers and changing it around for the commission, and I, especially you, Jenny, I want to thank you for all your work.
All right, we will move into old business, I don't think we have any, unless the commission has any, then we'll go into board governance, upcoming events, Madam Clerk.
I, I don't believe I added anything new, but I did make the correction that we spoke about last time.
Which was?
That was to fix the meeting dates in September to the fifth and sixth, or to the third and sixteenth.
All right, very good. Any comment on upcoming meetings and events? If not, we'll do the administrator's report then, and who's speaking for voiceless McKenzie Mr. Administrator, can you do that? Are we going to tax her voice?
I have a little bit of a voice.
Who are you?
McKenzie Phillips, Development Administrative Coordinator.
She used all her voice.
The only part of the update that's different from last time is that we did have a walk through with Randall Estates to identify the areas that still need to be improved before we can accept those public improvements, so he is going to be working on that once his contractor gets back in town.
Questions for McKenzie? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Save your voice, be healthy. Mr. Administrator, your report, sir?
We, you've been working on the creation of Studio District Number Four, we do have a couple of the petitions back at this point in time, and meeting individually with the landowners on that, the process is, once we receive those petitions back, we'll go through the process of publication for a hearing on the creation of that district, we've sent out six petitions there to the current landowners that are, either have a facility on there or in the process of constructing a facility, so that'll be the beginning of that process, we're gathering additional information from City Garden City on their rates, once again, their rates are a pass-through rate, we'll develop that fee structure so that the board can consider that as well.
With regard to the district?
Yes, sir.
District Number Four, what can we do to encourage the four landowners that we sent out creation documents to, to get those back to us?
Actually, we have meetings, individual meetings set with all of them, and.
All right, very good.
So, so we've been explaining what's going on, in essence, it's taking place, this district just takes place of that industrial district that the, that was dissolved a couple years ago.
All right, and the timeframe for the meetings and the public hearing on creating the district is, what's the timeframe?
Well, we have, we're having meetings this week, should be collecting the remainder of those petitions, I would hope no later than the end of next week, at that point in time then, we'll send out a notice of a public hearing for that creation, that's a thirty-day process, and following that, you'll hold a public hearing and, and if successful, then you'll go ahead and create the district at that point in time.
So perhaps the first meeting in November?
Perhaps, yes, yes, yeah.
I just want to give a timeframe for those who are interested so that we can get this district going. All right, very good.
Other thing is that we're working on is final contract with Hutten Construction on the Health Department EMS facility, you should see that on your agenda next week, you've already agreed to enter into an agreement with that, County Counselor has made some suggestive changes to that document, they're going back and making those changes, they'll have it for us on the sixteenth.
Well, I know that we've had a long discussion today about 2025 budget, but if you would, explain to the taxpayers that we're not creating a new ad valorem tax for the new EMS County Health Building.
That's correct, the, that project, along with some, the project of the LEC, is predominantly being funded through some sales tax revenue, there'll also be some transfers out from other funds to, for the Health Department EMS facility, and we'll have those transfers, we could have those transfers two years early, well, let me back up, the architect will be reaching fifty percent completion on the architectural design of that facility at Athan Mary, at that point in time, Hutten will have an updated budget on that, once we receive that, we'll make those, the transfers that we had planned on making in twenty-four, either at that meeting or the meeting following that, they anticipate having the fifty percent designs done by the second meeting, I believe, in October, so we'll be acting on that at that point in time.
Right, and as I understand it, and correct me where I'm wrong, we're going to use reserve funds of two point two five million in 2024, and then immediately additional two point two five million in 2025, so that there's no bond or indebtedness on this project.
That's correct, yes, yes.
And so while it appears to many that our cash reserves are adequate, we're going to be spending those down so that we don't have any debt on that building.
That's correct, that was the purpose of setting up those reserve funds in order to do that, forego the need for bond council and the interest associated with a twenty-year bond on it.
Correct, I would note, though, there is a sales tax for those people that are following, that's dedicated to that project and avoiding ad valorem tax.
That is correct.
All right, would you proceed, please?
I think Trudy has a update from the Health Department's two-day retreat, and if you'll allow her to go ahead and talk to you a little bit about that.
We'll hear from her now.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to give you an update. First of all, thank you to the commission and to the administration, as well as Finy County, for letting us put this retreat together. The idea of this retreat came about when we were awarded the Workforce Development Grant in December of 2023, and we were thinking about the attrition that we had seen during the time of the pandemic, the goals that were lost in trying to keep up with the pandemic demands, and, and also what post-pandemic work would look like, just to give you a better picture, I think during the pandemic, we lost around, over the course of the pandemic, we've lost almost a third, two-thirds of our staff and rehired those, so right now we have six people, six or seven people who have been there for longer than ten years, and everybody else has been there for around five years or less, so in, you know, getting our team together, we, we thought that it would be great to understand our mission better and find strategies to, to achieve that mission, so with those goals in mind, we, we designed the retreat as a two-day program, on day one, we focused on internal team building with sessions that focused on individual. and use our collective strengths. This has become more important post-pandemic, and with the kind of increase in population that we talked about in the previous presentation today, where we should be, we need to be working across our traditional program, programmatic silos and team boundaries. So we worked on some of, some strategies to do that more effectively. Speakers from KU and WSU were invited to conduct workshop sessions, and they conducted exercises that inspired participants to step outside of their comfort zones. They provided staff with tools that would help them stay engaged in their work and also work in an accountable manner, be more accountable to each other, and be more accountable to the county and public health missions. Moving forward, we will be able to use these tools in our own work, and also teach some of those tools to our clientele as tools to build resilience. A highlight of that day was when the county HR team, led by County HR Director Kelly Mannion, played benefits bingo with our staff, and she reminded everyone of the psychological and the tangible benefits of working in the public sector. Day two of the retreat shifted focus to engaging with our county's mission, dedicated to citizens serving its taxpayers, and then how do we bring this mission to bear as we strive for excellence in the public health work of promoting well-being, protecting health, and preventing disease for our community? The day started with County Administrator Robert Reese and Deputy and Assistant County Administrator Jenny Hemel talking to all the staff. The administrator, he gave us a call to advance rather than retreat. He called on us to look back, to learn from the past, from our challenges and successes, and use these as few, to fuel individual commitment to our team goals, because that is what builds an organization and a community. The county administrator also presented our team with the design for our new Health Department and EMS building, and these pictures were received with great excitement as the team looks forward to moving into the new premises in 2026. Following that, Commissioner Schultz, our BOCC Chair, addressed the team. He addressed us as a pride of Lions and called on us to keep working when all around might be discombobulated by challenges. It is through our work of compassion and help that we can uplift our fellow citizens. He reminded us that a community is only as strong as, only as strong, as good, as healthy, as the ones who need the most help. After this, we heard from a team from KDHE that was represented, represented by Deputy Secretary Ashley Goss and two public health specialists, Shelley and Tony. They discussed the model of decentralized, the decentralized public health model that is followed by Cancer State. They also discussed the foundational services that local public health departments are built around. They engaged with staff on strategies to convert these foundational goals into tangible services for the community. They discussed some of the contexts that has changed post-COVID, and the demands that are placed on teams due to restricted resources, how teams can find strength in each other and in our community even though resources might be restricted. In addition, Deputy Secretary Goss also talked about the process of revamping the Kansas Health Laboratory building and the energizing effect that it had on the state team with the hope that we will experience something similar with our new health and EMS building. Commissioner Reese joined us for a few sessions on that day and expressed appreciation for our team. He commended the county administration and county taxpayers on making the new Health Department and EMS building a reality. He also discussed the divisions and challenges that COVID brought to the fore and the resilience that was demonstrated in addressing the needs of all members of the community, whether they are pro-public health or against public health. We were joined by Randy Bowman, the Executive Director of Kansas Association of Local Health Departments. He took the theme of negotiating conflict further. He called on each of us to be persistent in our efforts to build coalitions and to not get stymied in the face of setbacks. He reminded us that public health goals are incremental and they are long-term, and the strength for these goals comes through our work with the community and with community stakeholders. The highlights of day two were the time that our commission, our administrators, and the KDHE dignitaries spent engaging with individual staff members as well as the team, and the discussions that they had with candor and great detail on working out strategies to take our mission forward. The retreat concluded with an exercise in, with each person identifying some action points that they can go back and put into motion and in order to drive excellence in our work for, of improving community well-being. In the coming weeks, we will capitalize on this energy and momentum and work on action plans to create a culture of empowerment, engagement, and excellence. I tried to make it brief and a very broad overview, but if you have particular questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Questions for Trudy?
I don't have a question, Trudy, but just a comment, I think this is really a tremendous thing you've done and helped your staff completely, you know, you know, with all the turnover you've had with the pandemic and everything that affected your operation, I would say this is a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your time and efforts.
Thank you.
Other Commissioners' remarks?
Good job.
Thank you.
Keep up the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also ask permission to express appreciation to the two Commissioners and our administrators and Assistant Administrator who were there on behalf of the staff. May I?
Sure. Well, don't go anywhere. The presence as presented are engraved in, say, empower, engage, excel, staff retreat, and appreciation for motivation for our team. Finney County Health Department, driving health forward together, August 29th and 30th, 2024, and the notation of the Finney County Health Department. For the viewing public, that's what it looks like. Thank you very much, Trudy.
Thank you.
Back to you, sir.
That is it for me.
All right, we'll hear from the County Counselor.
We do have, sorry, we do have need for a couple of executive sessions today. The first one to talk about some matters of attorney-client privilege, and the second one for non-elected personnel, so if we want to focus on that.
Do you have any other report?
Not at this time.
And our sheriff's sale is where?
It is nearing ready to file.
Very good. How many outstanding properties do we have?
I do not.
The treasurer would know.
I'm sure she would, but she stepped out, so.
We wore her out. We were down to about less than 20?
Yes, and I think that's held steady at this point, so I think we're at where we're going to be.
All right, very good. Look forward to the filing of that complaint, petition, excuse me, with the district court. For all the taxpayers that are on the list, get your name on the list, pay your taxes, and avoid the additional cost of court action. That's our best plan of action, and coordinate that with the treasurer. Trista Joyce is your elected treasurer, or you can call the County Counselor to redeem that property if you want to stay out of court. Anything else, County Counselor?
No, and I don't know if you guys want to do your Commissioner reports before we do those executive sessions, or how you want to do that.
Whatever.
I'd say so.
Do the reports now? All right, we'll go right to left then. Vice Chairman?
The only thing I have to report is I extended the Western Plains, oh, I don't know, meeting with Commissioners, some Commissioners from Scott City, and it was well-attended by our commission, so it was a great, great way to spend an evening. Other than that, no, no other reports.
Just kind of piggybacking on that, I attended the board meeting and their budget hearings and so forth for the Extension District, and all of that went well, and their particular mill levy is under the RNR number. I don't remember now exactly what it is, but it's less than one mill. So they're really doing well budget-wise. And then I just wanted to bring up, the Kansas Association of Counties had their first Legislative Policy Committee meeting last week, and then they have another one, I don't know if it doesn't say on here, but there were A through S with many subheadings as far as topics they were going to visit about. I did not sit in on it, but things like local elections, revenue neutral, there's some Sheriff's Association legislation, unfunded mandates, constitutional protection of home rule, those are just a handful of the topics that they were discussing. So it's going to be interesting to see in their second meeting, after they've been through this original list, what they come up with for legislative policy, but that process is underway at KAC right now.
And we're going to continue to be a member of KAC, are we not?
Well, somebody's going to be, so.
Okay, well, you would recommend it, wouldn't you?
Oh, yes, I highly recommend it. It's invaluable.
Commissioner Dries.
I too was at the appreciation dinner for the Extension. We had a Great Plains meeting, just run-of-the-mill meeting, however, they did set, I believe it's October 24th for the annual meeting. Probably going to be online instead of in-person this year, since of lack of interest last year. And then again, I too was at Trudy's. Neil and I really enjoyed that day, as learned a lot about health, my own self, and just how the pandemic affected not only the local department, but the state as well, what the state was running their lab test and was honestly kind of embarrassing. So they're working on that project as well. Anyway, I appreciate that invite and the chance to mingle with Trudy's people.
Mr. Jones.
Three things. I had an LEPC meeting, and Skylar stepped forward to take ownership of the chairman's position, and the debate is whether to meet monthly, quarterly, whatever. So the next meeting will be a quarterly meeting and then go from there. Also had a library board meeting, and as I mentioned earlier, the LSNS CEO, Todd, was here, and so a big part of that meeting was consumed with what's going on, new and novel in the library sciences realm. The third thing, I'm going to hand you a note, if you'd like, we could check your calendar, but I have a responsibility, and you were well-received the last time, and that's is a speaking position. Rotary next week on Wednesday, would your schedule allow that?
Well, thanks for all the notice, but yes, I'll be there.
Thank you.
You know, you guys think it's tough going out to some social clubs and why not, but Rotary and Lions are kind of all together, I think.
In fact, they're meeting today at noon together, so.
Well, they're probably getting a question agenda put together. This is a tough luncheon for the chairman folks. Anything else, sir?
That's it, thank you.
I'll be there. My report involves mostly my duties with Compass, and Compass, as you all know, has gone through a tremendous growth because of the buildup to the CBHCC designation, which we have a verbal that we passed all the scores and all the testing and all the compliance. We are waiting for the final letter to say yes. Compass is 303 people strong. They have 11 positions open. They too have had some turnover, but at a much lesser rate in '24. It is incredible what they're doing and how it's affecting our lives. Compass has the Haven House for Children in crisis here with up to six beds, I believe, and then we have four adult beds in Dodge City that can be split between two men and two women if need be. Otherwise, it's four. That's the closest crisis care center ability west of Larned. And as we look forward to our new facility, we need to make provision so that we can assist Compass and fulfill our duty and obligation to those who are in crisis with mental health issues. That's for another day, and with the help of HMN, we'll get a program put together under Commissioner Dries and Commissioner Pishney's oversight of that building and remodel of the LEC. That's all I have. Can we, Madam County Attorney or County Counselor, can we have one session, or do we need to have two separate sessions because of the two purposes?
There are two different purposes, so I believe we need to have two separate.
All right, well, we'll have the first executive session. Need a motion to go into executive session. How long do you need?
I believe we'll need 30 minutes for that first executive session, and we'll need to include the board, myself, Administrator Reese, Assistant Administrator Hemel, and Development Coordinator Phillips.
Could we put a five-minute break in right ahead of that?
We will. We'll not go into executive session until noon, and we're going, and my recommendation is we go for 20 minutes. We can always come back out more. Is there a motion to go into executive session at noon and be back at 12:20 for attorney-client privilege?
And with the participants that our Counselor mentioned, and I would so move.
Second.
Second, and that includes the Administrator, Assistant Administrator, County Counselor, and McKenzie Phillips. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session. We'll be back at 12:20.
... session.
No move.
Second.
Moving to seconded to go back into regular session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose. I'll confirm that no action was taken during executive session. We have a need for a second executive session with regard to non-elected personnel. Madam Counselor, who needs to be in attendance?
That would be the board myself and the Administrator.
And the Assistant?
No. She has requested not to be involved in that one.
What if we have finance questions?
Can you give us another brand?
Okay. Jenny's had enough of executive session for today. Entertain a motion to go into executive session for non-elected personnel for a period of how long?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes and to include the Administrator and County Counselor. Is there such a motion?
No move.
Second.
Moving to seconded to go into executive session for non-elected personnel with the County Counselor and the Administrator. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will return in twenty minutes.
... session?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll confirm that no action was taken during executive session. We have a need for a second executive session with regard to non-elected personnel. Madam Counselor, who needs to be in attendance?
That would be the board, myself, and the Administrator.
And the Assistant?
No. She has requested not to be involved in that one.
What if we have finance questions?
Uh...
Okay. Jenny's had enough of executive session for today. Entertain a motion to go into executive session for non-elected personnel for a period of how long?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, and to include the Administrator and County Counselor. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session for non-elected personnel with the County Counselor and the Administrator. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will return in twenty minutes.
[...].................................